I appreciate it.
For me? Sorry.
Just for fun, just for fun. You want to read it again?
Did you want to copy of the yearbook?
We're not distributing where did all this water?
We can hand it out now or later.
I don't know where all this water is.
Let's do this first.
I know as soon as I came in here I could feel the heat right away. Yeah, I do too in my card, I have my standard. I started the recording just sort of. Two ten, two ten, it was two ten. It's two ten? Two ten, so two twenty-five. Didn't know what was supposed to be. Yeah, that would have gotten there. These are dirty. Don't drink out of those. Two more minutes. The glasses in front are clean. Yeah, just, just switch to two twenty-four now. Is there anything else? No, thank you. Thank you so much. We're gonna do the votes? Yes. The votes, the minutes, the timestamp. Something's wrong because there's some. In the electronics, something wasn't switched. No, not on the vote, on the. Oh, um. Yeah. We're good. They were given fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes.
Okay, members of council, welcome back to our special council meeting. We recognize and acknowledge that we meet on the traditional territory of the Mississauga and Haudenosaunee nations and within the lands protected by the dish with one spoon Wapum agreement. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the city of Hamilton and temporary archived on the city's website. Other individuals and the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting as well. A reminder that electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during council meetings. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda or any changes, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of our MPP for Hamilton East, Paul Miller is here observing the proceedings. Thank you, welcome Paul. And then I'll turn to Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are two added communication items. One is from Dave Jackson, is to be received and referred to consideration of item 5.1. And 3.2 is correspondence from Deputy Chief Dan Kinsella to Chief Eric Gert, Hamilton Police Service regarding illegal dispensary enforcement and estimated cost of illegal dispensaries, also being received and referred to the consideration of item 5.1.
Okay, thank you. So, a motion to approve the agenda as amended, moved by Pearson, Second by Vanderbeek, an electronic vote please. Vote now. Thank you, one absent, so I think that's the vote. I would deem that to be approved, thank you very much. Are there any declarations of interest? Members of council, you have the communications items 3.1 and 3.2, any changes or disposition to be reserved and referred to item 5.1. So can I have a motion on both of those to have that done? Moved by Pearson, Second by Johnson, all in favor. Carrie, Councilor Marula, can I have a motion on the communications, please? Yep, gotcha. You have a motion before you?
Oh, here it is, sorry. Yes, it's moved by myself, Second by Councilor Collins, the council communications 3.1 and 3.2 be received and the recommendations be approved as follows.
Thank you, all in favor? Carrie, a motion to, on item 4.1, so starting on item 4.1, I'd like to turn it over to Jason Thorne, is just a brief overview of the previous report, the current updating, and any other, you know, reports from police or by law that were requested. So Jason, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And through the chair, so when this item was before GIC, the motion to refer the decision to this council meeting included some additional requests for information. We had also as staff committed to providing some updates to the information we had at that time. So that's contained, most of that is contained in item 4.1 on your agendas, which is an information report. There's six items that are identified or that are addressed in this information update. I'll start with the appendices. Appendix A to report 4.1 is the results of the online survey that was conducted. That was one of the directions from council was to post a survey for the public to respond in terms of their preferences for an opt-in or opt-out, and also to post the original staff report with that. So Appendix A provides an overview of the methodology that was undertaken, as well as the results of that survey, and that was undertaken by our communication staff. So John Hurtel will be here to respond to any questions about the survey. Appendix B is an update to the list of municipalities that have opted in or opted out as of January 10th, which is when we pulled that report together. So if you recall, in the presentation at GIC back in December, we had confirmation from a small number of municipalities. The province has been updating their website on a regular basis, and what you have as Appendix B is the latest list as of January the 10th of those municipalities that have chosen to opt-in or opt-out. Appendix C is an economic uplift review for permitting cannabis retail stores. So that was part of the motion that came out of the GIC meeting was to look at the economic uplift associated with permitting cannabis retail stores in the city of Hamilton. What we looked at was just really a direct economic impact, there wasn't any attempt to apply multipliers to see about how it could affect spinoff business, that sort of thing. So it looks just at direct economic impact. It was undertaken by staff in economic development as well as in finance under two scenarios, essentially a scenario where there's new construction and a scenario where they're occupying an existing structure. So that is Appendix C. And then if you look at page four of four of the report, under information, we speak to some of the other items that council had asked us to report back on. So one of the items was around the available funding, I'm on paragraph three under information of page four of four. The province has announced its Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund. This is a $40 million fund, we spoke about it in the report in December. Of that 40 million, 10 million is for what the province has spoken about of unexpected impacts, we don't yet know how that 10 million will be distributed or spent. 15 million is to be distributed evenly amongst all municipalities, sorry, distributed proportionally amongst all municipalities. So that amount for the city of Hamilton was confirmed in December at the GIC, we advised that that amount would be $574,493. What we have provided in terms of an update is how much would the second payment be if the city chose to opt-in. So the second 15 million the province has announced is to be distributed proportionally only amongst those municipalities who opt-in. So obviously, as more municipalities opt-out, the available share to those who opt-in is increased. So based on what we knew as of January 10th, in terms of municipalities that opted out, finance has done a calculation that the city's share would be approximately $600,000. That number will go up if in the next few days additional municipalities opt-in, but it would be at least $600,000 as a second payment if Hamilton opts in. We also, when I was presenting at the December GIC, had advised that by this date, we might have some more information in terms of charges that have been laid under the new provincial legislation. We had hoped that perhaps we would have some fines levied that we could report to council, so there was some sense of whether or not the courts were gonna award maximum fines or more of a slap on the wrist. Legal has been watching that, and unfortunately, as of the date of this report, we didn't have any information in terms of fines that had been levied under the new legislation. And finally, the last piece of information was the results of the lottery. So as we advised back in December, the province had announced that due to supply shortages, they'd only initially be awarding 25 stores across the province, seven of those in our region. And that lottery was held on Friday, so the information is not contained in your report because it was written before then, but I'm gonna ask Ken Leendert to just give a verbal update in terms of the results of that lottery which took place on Friday.
Great, thank you, Ken.
Mr. Mayor and members of committee, the results, obviously, are seven people have been selected, or seven entities have been selected. One is a corporation and the other one is a specific name of a company. We've been advised through this, through the AGCO website, however, through the media, we have found out that four are from Hamilton, but we have no indication where they may be setting up. These are just the ones that have been selected as per the lottery.
Thank you, Jason.
So that summarizes the information that's contained in the information report. I know that police services has also provided a memo with some updated information, so if council wishes at this time, I could ask Dan to provide an update on that.
I think we should do all the updates so that we can get everything on the table here. So Dan, if you could, just an overview on your report regarding the issue of enforcement and actions to date.
Absolutely, and through your chair, you have the memo before you, it's a kind of a broad overview of illegal dispensary enforcement and then a very high-level estimated cost for 2019. So we have had some challenges making sure that we had accurate tabulations, and we believe we have done that now. So I broke it down into pre-legalization and post-legalization. So pre-legalization, we've executed 66 warrants at 46 different locations. Please keep in mind that those locations that have been selected as part of warrant execution are done for a number of reasons, location, citizen complaints, complaints from other institutions, schools, those kind of things. So that's the rationale for approaching certain locations. The other part of that is 91 individuals were charged and 183 charges in total were laid across those 91 individuals. We began tracking court dispositions in February of 2018, and we had a project that we ran at that time that was directly targeting illegal dispensaries, it was called Project Pender, and we have reported on that. The court dispositions that went between February and October, so that period pre-legalization, there's 20 waiting dispositions, so those charges still have to be dealt with before the courts. There was four guilty police, and 71 charges were withdrawn with a peace bond. So then we get to the post-legalization period, and we have been working now currently with the Provincial Joint Forces Cannabis Enforcement Team. We worked with them on Friday for the most recent warrant that was executed, and with them and on our own, we've executed 11 search warrants and charged 39 individuals with 50 charges under both provincial and federal legislation. And all of the individuals that have been charged post-legalization are waiting dispositions before the court. We are currently waiting eagerly for the first disposition and verdict, as it were, to come down from the courts. And our most recent, or the very first charge that we laid under the new legislation was in court today, and it got put over until February the 11th. So we're still waiting for something to come from that side of things. The costs that are related, and I think it's very important to keep in mind that costs fluctuate, it depends how many illegal dispensaries we have. We know that they open and close on a somewhat regular basis, and I've been through the amount of work and effort that is required by the officers to get those warrants sworn to and put the teams together to go and do the entries. So I won't go over that again unless there are some questions. But just in a broad sense, what we're looking at for staffing, now keep in mind, this amount of 206,136.25 is estimated projected cost for 19. That involves the hiring of extra staff depending on how many illegal dispensaries we have to execute warrants at, how many pounds of cannabis that we pull out of there, how many other associated things that are seized when we do these warrants. So it just depends in regards to how things unfold. We are trying to be efficient, we are trying to do it with, you know, give you these numbers with the most reasonable accuracy that we can. As far as equipment goes, we'd be looking at $36,000 worth of equipment that's required, and potentially a facility upgrade, storage. Storage is a big thing when it comes to storing cannabis, it takes up a lot of room, and that's why the number fluctuates from zero to about $85,000. So currently, we have onsite storage, we try to, you know, move that along one way or the other, whether we dispose of it or if we have to return it by some reason from a court disposition. But all of it has to be held until we get to hear what the courts have to say about this. So we continue to do that, the more we seize, the more illegal dispensaries that are closed, the more that we have to store. It just is the nature of what we're involved in. As far as enforcement costs, we're looking at about $441,000 a year, that's for staffing and equipment, and that's directly related to the actual act of closing down dispensaries. And that is the overview and the summary, Chair.
Thank you. Deputy, just for clarity, you mentioned charges were withdrawn and peace bond delivered, that was by the court, not by police?
That's correct, that's by the court.
All right, so, members of council, I have a long list here, I think we're dealing with the report, first of all, in terms of questions on the details in the report, we're not yet ready to debate the motion that comes up next. So questions on the report or reporting? Councilor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just with respect to the survey itself, I'm getting a lot of questions on a personal level as well as via email and social media. And I think it's being misunderstood because it really isn't a valid survey per se, where there's, it's statistically sound. So if we could just have somebody explain what the validity of the survey actually is, because there is no margin of error of any kind. So through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through John Hurtel, John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to the councilor's question, absolutely correct, this would not be a format for a statistically valid survey. It could be called a number of things, an opinion poll, et cetera. Technically, it's referred to as a convenience survey. So those people who feel strongly enough about a particular issue will take the time to go online and express their point of view. So based on direction from council, particularly with the timeframes involved, the team took that direction, set up, I think it was the 19th of December that we were provided direction and we launched the survey on the 21st of December. So unless there's anything further, councilor, that you're absolutely right, it is not a statistically valid survey, it is a bit of a barometer in terms of how the community expresses their opinions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think it's really important that that be communicated because I did pick up the paper recently, and it basically assumed that it was statistically valid, and that 80% of Hamiltonians are in support of it. And just at the gym, or anecdotally, people are just confused because among their own peers and family, eight out of 10 people they know don't support it, so they were really beside themselves by reading that kind of nonsense. So I think it's important that that be clearly spelled out, or even maybe even omitted. Now that we have the snapshot opinion, biased opinion, I think it's important that we at least be open, transparent, and communicate accurately. There is enough misinformation in our public realm that we don't need more of it. So the fact that it's not statistically sound should not be used in any way, shape, or form as a means of supporting, or not supporting for that matter, what's before us. And I'll speak about other issues later, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Farr.
Thank you. First to Ken, sorry, Dan. First of all, thank you for answering the call from our last meeting and the information you provided at the last meeting, and for coming here today with the women and men of Hamilton Police Services. Dan, opting in means, clearly in this report, two sets of funding, one that all communities get in the ballpark of 500 for Hamilton with the first 15 million, second 15 million, this report indicates a projection of around 600, might be more depending on what we hear in the coming days from those municipalities doing exactly what we're doing here today. And according to your numbers, it looks as if within the next few years, you would be covered with respect to what's required in terms of resources, financial resources for Hamilton Police Services. My question is, you have a pending Hamilton Police Services budget coming to us in a couple of weeks, and would that budget include specific funding references related to cannabis enforcement from Hamilton Police Services? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy?
Through you, Mayor and Counselor, thank you for the question. The current budget will be presented by the chief tomorrow to the Police Services Board, and there is no direct funding for this within that budget.
Important to note, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Jason or Ken, this lottery result for, we know of, for Hamilton, but we do not know where. Through you, when will we know where they will be located?
Through the mayor. We would know once they select a site, and that site will go on to the AGCO website, and then we'll have 15 days to comment. So depending if the city opts in or out, if they're in, then we'll immediately start monitoring the website and, of course, monitor where a location is up for consideration, and then, of course, follow the direction from council to make sure that they meet all the criteria. But we won't know until, of course, until they apply.
Through you to Ken. We know that Premier Ford has indicated he limited the lottery numbers to 25 across the province, and the reasoning was federally, the product is just not available. Have you received any indication from the province or anywhere else when that cap may be lifted?
Through the mayor, we have not.
Okay. Finally, Mr. Mayor, in an opt-in scenario, obviously, there's that other phase of funding, and that's the above and beyond 100 million in excise tax. Then we go across the province to a 50-50 split for only those communities that choose to opt-in. Have we estimated or assessed, with any estimates, through you to Jason or to Mike or to Brian, just how much excise tax may be generated in the province annually?
So talk on that one. Brian? So through the chair, yeah, that amount was estimated only in the provincial, last provincial budget. So we don't know what that share is, I think it was $85 million in the first year, $115 million in the second year.
I'm sorry, through you, I should have been more clear. So with what you've provided here, which is in addition to what we had last time out, was looking more closely at the financials specifically for our city, but we know, I'm asking you this question based on who opts in and opts out, so we haven't looked at a formula and how that might affect us locally, then?
So through the chair, if you're referring to the additional amount that we talked about, so the second $15 million payment?
Oh, it's the excise tax.
The excise. So I know the province has estimated 85 million, but is there, has there been any change?
So through the chair, we're not aware of any change, and we're not aware of the formula that would distribute that to those municipalities.
I only ask because, again, in the community, we're hearing numbers much, much greater than 85 million, but I'm sorry, I wasn't clear enough there, Brian. I appreciate the opportunity, I'm sure I'll be speaking a little later.
To be clear, the excise tax, it's 50-50 of any number over $100 million.
That's right.
Is the provincial share.
For those who opt-in.
For those who opt-in, only, yeah. For those who opt-out, you don't participate at all, okay. No, apparently not, no. No. Councilor Jackson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks General Manager Thorne and Director Hurtel and Deputy Chief Kinsella for the additional information you gathered, the survey, and the updated facts and figures from all sectors. Mr. Mayor, wherever this vote ends up going today, I think there was universal applause, well, near universal applause, at least from the many people I spoke to over the last 72 to 96 hours, when a retail location was finally seized by our Hamilton Police Service. And I would like to ask Mr. Mayor, through you to Deputy Dan Kinsella, how did that come about? Is there possibly more on the horizon? So three questions, Dan. How did that come about? Are there more on the horizon? And Dan, I need to mention this to you and ask it in a form of a question, Mr. Mayor. Many people that I spoke to in the last three, four days since that, I'll say was a fabulous announcement from my standpoint, many people I spoke to said, "long overdue, Councilor Jackson, what took our service so long?" So Mr. Mayor, through you, please, to Deputy Kinsella for answers.
Thank you. Deputy?
Through you, Mayor. Thanks for the question, Counselor. So I've been talking about this, and we as a police service have been talking about this for a little while. I've had consultations with the Ministry of the Attorney General, with the OPP, in-house counsel, and when new legislation comes out, and sometimes even when legislation
was looking more closely at the financials specifically for our city, but we know, I'm asking you this question based on who opts in and opts out. So we haven't looked at a formula and how that might affect us locally, then?
All right.
So through the Chair, if you're referring to the additional amount that we talked about, so the second $15 million payment.
Oh, it's the excise tax.
The excise. So I know the province has estimated 85 million, but is there, has there been any change?
So through the Chair, we're not aware of any change, and we're not aware of the formula that would distribute that to those municipalities.
I only ask because, again, in the community, we're hearing numbers much, much greater than 85 million. But I'm sorry, I wasn't clear enough there, Brian. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm sure I'll be speaking a little later.
To be clear, the excise tax, it's 50-50 of any number over $100 million.
That's right.
Is the provincial share.
For those who opt in.
For those who opt in only, yeah. For those who opt out, you don't participate at all. Okay. No, apparently not. No. No. Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, General Manager Thorne and Director Hurtel and Deputy Chief Kinsella for the additional information you gathered, the survey, and the updated facts and figures from all sectors. Mr. Mayor, wherever this vote ends up going today, I think there was universal applause, well, near universal applause, at least from the many people I spoke to over the last 72 to 96 hours, when a retail location was finally seized by our Hamilton Police Service. And I would like to ask, Mr. Mayor, through you to Deputy Dan Kinsella, how did that come about? Is there possibly more on the horizon? So, three questions, Dan. How did that come about? Are there more on the horizon? And Dan, I need to mention this to you and ask it in a form of a question, Mr. Mayor. Many people that I spoke to in the last three, four days since that, I'll say it was a fabulous announcement from my standpoint, many people I spoke to said, "Long overdue, Counselor Jackson. What took our service so long?" So, Mr. Mayor, through you, please, to Deputy Kinsella for answers.
You. Deputy?
Through you, Mayor. Thanks for the question, Counselor. So I've been talking about this, and we as a police service have been talking about this for a little while. I've had consultations with the Ministry of the Attorney General, with the OPP, in-house counsel. And when new legislation comes out, and sometimes even when legislation has been around for a long time, that legislation is open to interpretation. And when the legislation came out on October 17th, it didn't immediately come with an interpretation to tell us exactly what the rules would be and how we were to respond and interpret and enforce the act. So we took the time to make sure that we did the research, managed the risk. Anytime that we take an action like we did on Friday, there's risk to the city. I think it's prudent and important that we evaluate that risk based on the totality of circumstances. What is the emergency, if there is one? What is the long-term effect? Making sure that we do it right, getting the appropriate authorities in place, making sure that we have the confidence as an organization to be able to bring the proper charges before the courts, make sure that once we decide to lock a premises, as we did on Friday, that we mitigate the risk as best we can and manage that risk. And we've talked in the past, if we walk away from a building and just leave it locked and somebody breaks into the building, somebody injures themselves, who's responsible? Who's going to be on the hook for that and who's going to pay? If we just change the locks on the door and walk away and somebody breaks in and they set fire to the building, and that fire spreads to adjacent and attached buildings, who's responsible and who's going to pay? These are all things, and I could go on, and I won't, but I could go on with other areas of concern. So we wanted to make sure that we're on solid ground and avoid the liability that may come with that. The other thing as well, there have been other police services, at least two that I'm aware of, that have locked buildings after they did a warrant execution. And in one of those situations, my information is that the owner showed up the next morning and broke back into the premises and opened up. In my view, we wanted to make sure that we were prepared, that if the owner of the building on King Street showed up, that we were prepared with the appropriate action, the appropriate enforcement action. As a result, we alarmed it. We have surveillance on the building, and we're making sure that we actually have physical control of the building. And should someone decide that they have the authority or, you know, the need to go into that building, we will be alerted if they try to get in other than a normal way with a key, that kind of thing. Also, if someone feels they have the right to that building, they can apply before the justice and ask them to overturn what we did on Friday. We haven't seen that yet, but that challenge may be coming. So I think it's important that we took the time that we did, consult with the appropriate people that we did, make sure that we make an informed decision moving forward. And I think we did that. We got to the level of comfort on Friday that we feel. We have done it in the best interests of the community, the best interests of the city, and certainly, I think we're on very solid ground with what took place on Friday.
Counselor Jackson.
Excellent, prudent response, Deputy Kinsella. So Deputy, subsequent to that, and in light of your consultation with higher authorities like the AG at Queens Park, is this what happened Friday? I would say again, on behalf of the overwhelming number of people I spoke to in the last three, four days, will this be, again, wherever this vote goes today, will the illicit pursuit of seizure, will it be a harbinger to come of what happened on Friday in our community? Mr. Mayor, through you, please.
You.
Through you, Mayor. So the matter of opting in or opting out does not materially change the way that we are going to respond to illegal dispensaries. We're going to continue to enforce appropriately, appropriate authorities, appropriate application of the law to make sure that we shut them down. That's our commitment, and we've been quite public about that.
So basically, Deputy, what I said was what happened Friday then, first time, the seizure, that that's a harbinger, that's a prediction, if you will, a future prediction of hopefully what's still to come in our community. Mr. Mayor, through you.
Mr. Mayor, yes. So the short answer, yes. It's a template moving forward. However, I would just like to add a proviso because things change. People make applications to the court, the laws are challenged, those kind of things. So with the current status and the way things went on Friday and what I'm hearing to date, that will be the template moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I think all of us around this chamber, the flaunting of the law, the mockery of the law is what, if anything, most of my constituents I've heard from are just objecting to and appalled by. Mr. Mayor, through you to General Manager Thorne and/or Director Hurtel on the survey, that's a snapshot, that's a barometer, we heard, of what the responses were. We've now had from the Hamilton Winterford District School Board, the other large school board of our community, the Catholic Board responded before Christmas indicating their serious concerns of proximity to schools and public parks. Mr. Mayor, through you to General Manager Thorne or Director Hurtel, was that the top concern of people who responded on that survey, even for those that were in support of retail recreational cannabis stores? Mr. Mayor?
John?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. That was exactly the top concern, was proximity. And if you look at your report on page four of seven, you'll see the ranking of the areas of most concern by those who participated in the survey.
Thank you, John. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. That's it for now.
Thank you. Further on, on questions, Counselor Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just get some clarification, please, with regards to the police budget? So I see the total number of 769,000. I heard the Deputy Chief indicate that, to Counselor Farr, that the, there was not going to be an increase in the police budget coming forward specifically for this, but when I'm looking at the chart here, it talks about staffing of 206,000. It sounds like that's new staffing as opposed to the regular complement. So can I just get clarification there, please?
Deputy?
Through you, Mayor. So that's projected staffing, and we're not asking for that staffing currently. And to my earlier point, we're trying to be as efficient and prudent as we can. We don't have the need for that staffing as of today. However, we may have that need depending on how we go with the illegal dispensary issue. So it's there kind of as a marker, just to say that there's a potential. And please keep in mind that all of these costs are estimated as accurately as we possibly can based on the information that we know.
Counselor Clerk?
They're basically, Mr. Mayor, accounting chargebacks, because we already have a budget for the Police Department. And in that budget, they're supposed to look after the entire city. So this 769,000 is really an accounting exercise indicating the hours of work that were compiled by staff that are already working, already within the police budget. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Mayor?
Through you, Mayor. The staffing, the line here for the staffing, the 206,000, is potential projected staffing. It's work, the work that is being done in relation to the dispensaries now is being done by current working staff. This is to let Counsel know that if our dispensaries continue or blossom up to 80 or 100, and we continue to shut them down and we continue to seize large amounts of cannabis, there is a potential that we will need to have that. So it's a projected cost, and I'm hoping that is clear.
Counselor Clerk?
Thank you. So just prior to Christmas, when you appeared here, you indicated that the police was waiting for court disposition to see what kinds of fines or convictions, what actually was happening. And so you weren't really going out and shaking the tree until he actually understood that. Now I'm hearing that there is a better understanding, given the Joint Task Force and the Attorney General's Office, that the laws are there and that you can actually implement them. So would you indicate that it's zero tolerance now for the illegal shops? Because I can tell you, since before Christmas, right after that was said, and here, six more illegal shops popped up in Ward Six and a few more in Lower Stony Creek and East End. And they're advertising now. We're getting flyers in the door for sales on extracts, and one guy's actually giving a car away. If you buy a gram, you get a free ballot for a car. These are black market, 100% illegal shops. So is the Police Department now indicating, Mr. Mayor, that there's going to be zero tolerance and you're going after all of these illegal shops?
Through you, Mayor. The, we're not indicating anything new. We have continued and we will continue to shut down illegal dispensaries. On Friday, when the warrant was being executed, and I've mentioned this, and we've had this discussion, but the gentleman came up and said, "There's another one over there. There's another one over there. There's one around the corner." And I had a nice chat with him, and I said I understood that. And he asked me to go from there on King Street to go right to the next one and to do the exact same thing. And I said, "We can't do that today because here's the process." And I gave him the process, the days and hours that it takes to gather the evidence, to put the warrant together, to put the team together, all those kind of things. So nothing has changed. My sense is that people would like this to happen faster, but we still have to go by the law. We have to go by the requirements of the law. We have to proceed under the authorities. And that unfortunately takes some time to make sure that we do it properly. So we will continue to enforce. It will continue to be zero tolerance. We're in a better position now, having the, to your point, having the comfort to move forward with securing and locking the doors of the premises on King Street. That will be the template moving forward, subject to some sort of judicial review or legal decision coming down from a court. So, you know, and we will continue to do that, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, I had a fellow say this to me over the Christmas holidays. If I crack open a beer in a car in front of a cop, he's being very parochial, they're going to arrest me because they saw me drink the beer in the car. If a police officer is standing by an illegal cannabis shop and can look through the window and see the actual sale happening, why isn't the arrest being made in the same manner that you would if you saw someone doing something with illegal liquor?
So through you, Mayor. So the first scenario would be under the Liquor License Act and the rules and regulations in regards to search and seizure and arrest as it pertains to the Liquor License Act. The second scenario with the cannabis store falls under the Cannabis Act and our ability and requirements under law to get a search warrant, to do the appropriate judicial procedure, and follow those steps to make sure that we do it properly. So that essentially is the difference between the two scenarios.
Counselor Clerk?
Two quick questions for bylaw enforcement. So do we now have a projection on how much bylaw enforcement is going to be required for the legal shops, given that I understand you're working with the police on the illegal side? But on the legal stores, what type of enforcement would be required? What would the cost be? And contrarily, sir, how much enforcement is the AGCO required to do on the legal shops?
Ken?
Through the Mayor. Our plan is to have two new FTEs at $220,000 with administrative support for either way, opting in or opting out. So if we opt in, their job will not only be to support the police and enforce all the bylaws in relation to signed bylaw, in relation to the licensing bylaw for selling food products, but we'll also making sure that we are directly communicating with AGCO and representing the information from this Counsel as well as the community. So our plan is, when we locate through the AGCO website a location, we'll actually go do an inspection. We'll ensure that the separation distance between schools is correct. We'll knock on every door and advise the community in that area that there is a dispensary coming in, because the timeline's so short for the community to respond. So we're going to do it on behalf of the community. We'll also function very similar to how we do for liquor license. We'll make sure the area Counselor is aware. We'll make sure Fire is aware, public health, building, planning, and make sure everything is done correctly before we send the letter off to the AGCO. And a very short timeline, this all has to be done within 15 days. And so that's what the team will be doing if the Counsel decides to opt in. If Counsel decides to opt out, these two FTEs, bylaw officers, will be working very closely with the Police Department to use all the powers we have and all the authorities we have to help shut down these illegal operations.
Thank you very much. The last question, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be to Finance or Mr. Hurtel. So when I read the regulation with regards to the three funds that are available, the first one, everybody, every municipality received 576,000, I'm guesstimating roughly what it was. The second one is only municipalities who are opting in. The third one is the share of the excise tax. The first year was 85 million was projected. The second year is 150 million, which is already 50 million over the 100 million mark. And 50-50 would only be to those municipalities who opted in in Phase One. That's what I read in the regulation. Can I just get clarification on that, please?
Right.
Yeah, so through the Chairs. In addition, there was that additional $10 million that was for unforeseen circumstances that they haven't decided how that's going to be allocated, and that's for municipalities that have not opted in.
But to be clear, the excise tax money is for municipalities who opted in in the first round, not those who decide to opt out and opt back in. That's the way the regulation is written, and that's what I read.
So through the Chair, yes. So it's for municipalities that have opted in as of January 22nd, 2019.
Thank you. That's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brenda Johnson.
I've got a whole whack of questions, so please bear with me. So, Brian, just a segue on to that questioning. If I look at the Appendix B, and this is all the municipalities that are opting in and opting out, so if you follow my math, which is why I'm not working in your department, I'm looking at at least 200 more. If it's, if the trend is there, I'm looking at at least 200 more municipalities that will probably be opting in, if you follow a trend. So we're looking at about 278 altogether that are splitting the 15 million. Is that what I heard earlier? Can you just clarify?
Through the Chair, correct.
Okay. So when I look at the list that the staff have given us so far, the 78 that opted in, it looks like some pretty big cities in there, like Toronto, and we've got Ottawa and London. So have you, in your own math, not mine, thank God, have you figured out just approximately how much do you really think we're going to end up with at the end of the day with these 278 municipalities sharing out of that pot?
Right. So through the Chair. So our initial numbers that we calculated was based on the information that we had last week on the municipalities that had opted out. So the municipalities that have opted out do receive a minimum $5,000 payment as well. So, I was saying $5,000? Thank you.
I thought that's what he said.
So through the, so through the Chair, there, that's why we came up with the additional $600,000 that our next payment might be, but we have not continued, we have continually not updated the number as municipalities have chosen to opt out or opt in.
That was just based on the 78 that opted in?
Sorry, through the Chair, we had 28 at that time, and I know the numbers have, keep changing to those that have opted out.
Okay. So if it's 78, I think my numbers came to 192, and then if it, if all 278, if you follow that trend, then it would be about 54,000 at the end of the day.
So through the Chair, it's based on, it's based on households to opt in.
Yes, I agree. I'm just, it's my math, not yours. Okay. So, Ken, just again, just while your statement was fresh in my mind, you were saying it's a 15-day turnaround. Today, if there is a tavern in any one of our wards that want to start up and obtain and apply for a license, then the Counselors and the city is notified, and the Counselors can then comment on it. Nope, sorry, these guys are trouble, or yes, it's fine because it's far away, good people running it. Do we have that opportunity this time with cannabis, as we do with liquor licenses?
Through the Mayor, we do have time for comment, but we are restricted to 15 days. So it's a very quick turnaround. Where under the LCBO regulations, it's 30 days.
Okay. Thank you. And Ken, you said that the lottery was done last Friday. You think there's at least four in Hamilton that obtained the lucky red ticket. You think there's at least four in Hamilton that obtained the lucky red ticket. So my question is, if these four companies decide to set up shop regardless what are, say we opted out, but they have their licenses and the go-ahead from higher-ups, if they set up shop now in Hamilton, I would assume they're not breaking criminal code. It's now a bylaw that they're breaking, a zoning bylaw. Is that true?
So through the chair, once, let's assume there are four that choose to set up in Hamilton if they have their license. As long as they set up in a location that is zoned for commercial uses, there's no zoning bylaw infraction, there's no infraction of any local plans or policy. So if they are a licensed, if they have their license, they can set up in any commercial area.
So, thank you for that. So if I'm hearing this properly, the four that got their licenses can set up shop whether we opt in or out?
No, no, no.
Okay, well then, please say that again.
Sorry, sorry if I was unclear. So only if the city of Hamilton opts in, then those seven licensees can choose to set up in Hamilton.
Okay, but my question was if we opt out.
Then they cannot choose Hamilton.
Are they breaking criminal code or zoning bylaw code or both?
So they would not be breaking, as of right now, the dispensaries that are open are not breaking zoning bylaws because the provincial legislation has indicated that they are to be treated as commercial uses. So there's not a zoning infraction, which is why the charges that have been laid since the passage of that legislation have been through the police.
Okay, so my understanding through Deputy Chief's statement and the good work that they have just recently done, you're able to go into illegal shops and put the locks on the door and walk away. These four coming into Hamilton, set up shop, are they breaking any codes or laws of your nature that you're able to go in and shut down those four regardless whether we opt in or out? I'm saying if we opt out.
Through you, Mayor. Yeah, they'd still be breaking the law. Nothing will change. They will be an illegal dispensary.
Okay.
And we will treat them just like all the other illegal dispensaries.
And thank you for that. And Deputy Chief, just quickly, it's my understanding that it is cannabis that can be ingested that is the, that is the big question, is it breaking the code? If it's a cream that they apply on their bodies for, you know, is that illegal? Can any shop sell that?
Well, I don't have the exact information on that. There currently, anything with THC is illegal. The CB, CDC piece is illegal currently as well. It will determine edibles are illegal, anything like that. So any of that material right now is illegal. I mean, it's a legal substance as far as the federal government.
No, but there's a bunch of spas that are selling it right now.
And it's currently still illegal to sell it.
Okay, thank you. And I heard earlier that the, her peace bonds issued at the last, as punishment, correct?
Correct.
So if this new law comes down, is there any harsher laws coming with it for the illegal establishments to deter them even further from opening up?
Through you, Mayor, yes. The fines that are available now under the new legislation are significantly higher in the sense that the courts can apply higher penalties if they choose to do that. That's why we're waiting to see what they come back with for all these that we have before the courts currently. The past practice of issuing a peace bond or a small monetary fine of $1,000 when they plead guilty is not a deterrent to setting up the shops because of the revenue that they make. So, you know, we've been asking for that, and we're hoping that the courts will come through and deliver on a substantial enough penalty to deter the practice of participating in illegal cannabis shops.
Make sure we get all our numbers right. There are currently new fines that are going to be delivered to operators and landlords. Can we have those numbers? They're specified in the act, in fact.
There's fines up to $200,000 for people selling, and there's fines up to $1 million for owners who are permitting the selling of cannabis within their buildings without a permit.
Thank you. That was my next question. Thank you. So again, the laws have substantially changed to deter them even further, correct?
Correct.
Right, thank you. So Jason, quick question. If we opt out now, or no, if we opt in now, can we in the future say, "No, you know what? It's too much. We can't handle this. We need to opt out now." Do we have that open to us? Or is it, we're in, we're in?
Through the chair, if you're in, you're in. If you opt in, a municipality cannot opt out at a later date.
But you can opt in at a later date if you choose to opt out today.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good questions. I think this has been a good, a good learning exercise around the table here, so I really appreciate my colleagues asking the questions. Coming back to Deputy Kinsella, please, through the chair. The chart on the back, the estimated number of 683,000 to 769,000, that's an annual cost projected?
Through you, Chair. It's the annual cost for 2019. We are working on costing out 2020, 2021. It's expected to be in that area, but really, it will be determined by the number of illegal shops that continue, our ability to close them, and a lot of that is up in the air right now. We have to kind of work through it and wait for the information to come in. So to the earlier point, I think with Counselor Clark, we're trying to make it as accurate and as factual as we can without overdoing it. And, you know, it will change, and that's why we're trying to present it the way that we are. If the illegal dispensaries remain at the level they are, I don't suspect they will with the new strategy and are moving forward, we can expect the cost to stay approximately in the same, in the same range. The goal is to eliminate them and eliminate the big chunk of this cost, if not all of it.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate that answer very much, but then coming back to the earlier discussion and some earlier questions about where the courts are right now, they have kind of punted the decision to February 11th, if I understand correctly. Is that, is that correct?
Through you, Mayor, yes, that's correct.
And that's based on all the charges that are before the courts right now?
For one particular, our very first warrant that we executed under the new legislation, that was first up for, in court in November, got pushed over to today's date in January, now it's been pushed forward to February. It's just that particular charge, and hopefully it'll be heard that date, but it may not.
So that's one charge, if I'm understanding correctly, and yet there are 50 charges that are, that are under review right now?
It's a number of charges from the first warrant that we did.
From the first warrant, okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And a few more questions, because that, you know, that 680,000 to 770,000 per year, that's based on 2019, understanding that you're looking at the 2020, 21 figures, you know, it doesn't look to me like we're going to be getting near enough from the province to be able to cover those. And those are just, I would suggest, at the low end going forward, looking at that as an annual figure. The very first line where it says staffing and in brackets, not including enforcement costs, could you unpack that for me a bit, please?
Sure. So that particular line for staffing, through you, Mayor, is for, you know, the potential that we may need more drug clerks, we may need more people to help us store the cannabis, more people to return it, or more people to go and dispose of it, those kind of things. The enforcement costs are the physical costs that we incurred on Friday, for example. So that includes the preparation time, the gathering of the evidence, the cataloging of the complaints, the writing of the information to obtain the warrant, appearing before the justice to obtain the warrant, assembling the entry team to put together. Then, once we execute the warrant and take all the cannabis out or whatever else we find in there, putting on the alarm, setting up the surveillance sets required for that particular location. And I think it's important to note that every location is a little bit different. Every location has, you know, a different number of doors, different number of windows, different number of things that need to be protected. So moving forward, we are continually, continuing to assess, you know, based on what we've done on Friday, is that what we need to do? Every time, do we need to beef it up? Can we scale back a little bit? Those are the things that we're trying to, to make sure that we do properly and as efficiently as we can while we maintain public safety.
And I appreciate that, and thank you for clarifying that, you know, really it's based on what we know now and what we're doing today. So, you know, we don't have a crystal ball that we can look at to project going forward. And my concerns are, of course, that you've just, you know, you've just talked about the enforcement costs from the police perspective, but what about our MLE? You know, we did get some figures based on MLE, but we really don't know going forward. So my final question, because again, there's been some terrific questions asked around the table. Based on the number of illegal operations that we have right now in this city that we know about, what about the storage space? Because it does take a considerable amount of storage space just to be able to hold all of the evidence for each seizure that we make. So where are we with storage space? Do we have enough for everything that we've got going on right now?
Currently, our storage is about 2/3 full, and we're always exploring other options to say, you know, as it fills up, where are we going to go next? It's my best information that there's nothing available that the city has that we can, we can utilize right now, so we're exploring those options. Right now, for what we're doing, we're okay, but as we do more and as we seize more and that fills up, we have other opportunities that we have to explore to make sure that we have that ability to store it, has to be secured, all those kind of things.
So just to confirm then, so based on all of the illegal operations we've got going on right now, you feel that we have enough storage space at this point in time to be able to accommodate that?
Through you, Mayor, yes, for the ones that we have executed to date.
Okay.
Okay? The answer will change if tomorrow we go and execute the 34 that are illegal right now. We don't have the resources to do that, but if we were to go and do that, I can't tell you whether we would have enough space because I don't know how much we'll seize.
Okay, so there, that's where my question was going to, is, you know, based on what we've seen today, no, my question is based on all that we have operating. So if we had to go for additional storage space, that would be an additional cost as well, potentially?
Yes.
To rent the space, purchase the space, put the proper amount of security in place, et cetera, et cetera. So we don't know what that cost is going to be.
Well, we've estimated it here in the report, and we've estimated it from $0 to $85,000. That's our best estimate based on projections of what we might seize, what we may not seize, those kind of things.
Right, right, okay.
So if, you know, that's, does that answer the question? I hope it does.
So I, yeah, and I misunderstood because it says facility upgrade. So, you know, I didn't know whether that meant the existing facility upgrading or potentially looking at new locations, but thank you for clarifying that. I do have a few other questions, but I think I'd like to hear from my colleagues. There's quite a few that are on the list. Thank you, everyone, for great work on this report. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Questions? Maria Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly everyone. I agree, this hasn't been easy, I'm sure, to put this all together as quickly as you have, especially the survey. So I guess I have a few questions. Some have been answered, but I'm going to go then to, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Debbie Chief Kinsello then. Just going back to your list on the back page, you mentioned equipment twice, and I understand you just clarified a bit that enforcement costs, that's a different type of equipment, correct?
Through you, Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so when you're saying equipment, would that mean, and I want to ask because we have the units, I take it when you stop cars, drivers who may be high, there's the breathalyzers, I'm assuming that's part of what you're incorporating in here?
Through you, Mayor, no. Please keep in mind that these are the expenses directly related to the costs for dispensaries. We're not talking about impaired driving. That's going to be another set of issues. These are specifically for dispensaries.
Thank you, and I appreciate that clarification. So that, that's all I needed for the Deputy Chief to answer. Through to Mr. Thorne then. Jason, you mentioned four applications, four licenses were approved for Hamilton, if I'm not mistaken, or is it seven for an area?
So through the chair, what was, what was approved through the lottery is seven licenses for the region. The, the number that four of those licenses may wish to set up in Hamilton if Hamilton opts in, that was for media reports. We don't have any confirmation that that is in fact the number. So what the lottery provided was for seven operators' licenses. Their next step for those, those seven licensees is to apply for retail store authorization. So they can only apply for those authorizations within a municipality that has opted in. So they still have to go through that process. If Hamilton opts out, then they cannot seek one in the city of Hamilton.
Thank you. And to that then, so seven licenses for the region. Just clarify, because back in December, when we were here dealing with this, I remember reading somewhere that license doesn't mean a location. So that licensee can have how many locations?
Through the chair, each can have one. So those seven licensees can have seven stores. Total.
Sorry.
Each licensee can have one store.
But in the report received in December, it didn't have, they could have more than one location on one license, so I just wanted to get that clarified.
So through the chair, because of the license, the lottery process, what the province has indicated for now is that each of those operators can only have one store. At some point in the future, if they choose to release additional opportunities for stores, then perhaps those licensees could apply in the future, but for now, there are only seven stores available within our region.
Okay, that's not what I read in, so that's obviously a change, and I'm, you know, I feel much better that has come about. Lastly, I want to ask if I could, Mr. McMullin, this might be a stretch in asking. So just please clarify, the first round, $574,000. The second round, if we opted in, is a percentage of everybody who opts in, correct?
Right.
So through the chair, that's correct, yes.
And the 50-50 share in the excise tax, just want to make sure we get it out there, is only if we opt in now?
So through the chair, yes, if we opt in as of January 22nd.
Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor Marula is just signaling, maybe he wants to speak to it later. Is there some conditions that will change going forward?
So through the chair, I, I'm not aware of that, I'm just aware of what we were sent in the, in the letter from the, from the Minister of Finance.
Okay, then I'll leave, maybe Counselor Marula will clarify that.
The opt-in is, they've committed to sharing 50-50 for two years. They haven't made a commitment beyond that, but only if you opt in do you get a share of that 50-50 for two years.
Thank you. And just rough numbers, and this is where I come to Brian, whether he's done anything, just rough numbers. Do we have an idea about how much would be our share if we opted in on the excise tax? Just a ballpark, saying everybody opted in?
So through the chair, no, I don't have that number.
Okay, we'll leave it at that then, but thank you for that.
Thank you. Can I just, it's totally reliant on the, the volume of excise tax that they actually collect, so it's hard to estimate. I mean, I've done some estimations, I can share them with you if you want, but it ranges, you know, if we, if they collect 200 million annually, we get a certain percentage of that. If it's a billion, then we get a percentage of that. So it's really hard to kind of nail down as a specific number. Counselor Whitehead?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess there's a couple of fronts, but I want to premise my, this conversation that we're really focusing on the implications, to the most part, in respect to the legalization of marijuana, and it's got absolutely nothing to do with either opting in or opting out. So I want to make sure we're not conflating the two issues and appears that, to some degree, is what's taking place. So I want to separate those issues, but I will focus on them separately and I'll identify it as such. So.
So can I, can we not get into debate though? Because I just want to deal with questions on the report.
I'm not getting into that, I'm asking questions in those streams.
Okay, you've broadened it out a fair bit, but there are, you know, additional information reports before us.
Correct.
That's what we're focused on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. I just want to make sure even in those, those reports, they're conflating a couple of issues. For example, we have a report on the police on suggested cost in regards to enforcement of illegal dispensaries, and I don't know what that relevance is in the context of opting in or opting out of the decision we have to make today. So if we're having that discussion, we have to make it clear that any suggestion that those costs have any bearing on opting in and opting out is a bit misleading, and that's what I want to flesh out. Okay? So through, to the deputy, did dispensaries in Hamilton exist prior to the legalization of marijuana?
Yes, through your chair.
And you had to use resources to address those legal dispensaries even in that time?
Through your chair, yes.
Mr. Chair, after the legalization of marijuana, I guess it could be suggested there was an uptake on the illegal dispensaries. Would that be fair to say, through the chair?
An uptake from the police chair, through the chair?
More dispensaries started appearing after the legalization of marijuana.
Yes, the dispensaries have, they ebb and Yes, the dispensaries have, they ebb and flow, but initially when, just to give some context, initially when the information came from the government that if someone was not operating an illegal dispensary at the time of legalization, that they could still be considered to get a license down the road. So initially, we dropped down to about 20, 21 dispensaries, somewhere in there. As time went on and more information came about the lottery process and how long it was going to take, a number of those reopened, or a number of new ones reopened, so the number went up again. And we currently sit at about 34. So the answer is yes, they did go, they went down, and then they went back up, and that's the current state.
So, and the reason why I want to, just sort of, so basically, we had them before, and you were enforcing and spending money, we have them now, you're enforcing and spending money. And so going forward on the legalization, it was a federal decision, not a provincial decision. The federal government has some responsibility to ensure that municipalities across the country have the resources to address their new legislative framework.
Through your chair, yes.
So moving forward, you're putting estimates of cost, you know, we talk about storage, for example, and I want to make sure that any of these costs have nothing to do with opting in. In fact, could it not be argued, if you opt in, there'd probably be less need for storage of illegal cannabis because it probably would go down relative to the legal dispensaries coming online?
Okay, so you're getting into opting in and opting out, I think the answer that he gave was, it doesn't matter whether we're in or out, these costs are going to apply. That's been the answer? Deputy, do you want to clarify in any way, shape, or form?
Sure, through you, Mayor. The costs will remain as long as there are illegal dispensaries, it's as simple as that. Our goal is to get rid of the illegal dispensaries. To your point, perhaps, you could make the assertion, or the assumption, or the projection, that if we had legal dispensaries, that perhaps people would go and purchase their cannabis from the legal dispensaries as opposed to the illegal ones. So I think that's where you're going with it, and I think that would be reasonable for anyone to suspect that. For our purposes, it doesn't materially matter whether you opt in or opt out, as long as there's illegal dispensaries, we will continue to enforce them, we will continue to incur the costs, and we will have to work through and with the legislation and our partners to make sure that we're able to do that.
Counselor.
Now over to Ken Leanhurst, Mr. Chair, the question I have on the bylaw side proportionally, any additional cost in your division, are you attributing a percentage to the already AGO, whatever, legalized dispensaries, or majority of that cost is associated with the current ongoing problems with the illegal dispensary issue? Ken?
Through the mayor, we will be hiring two additional FTEs, and it's part of the transition from the legal properties, or illegal dispensaries, so a significant amount of work has been done the last two years in relation to the illegal ones. But when the legal ones come in, if we opt in, there'll be significant amount of work to ensure that they're in the right location, but if we opt out, there still will be significant amount of work for these officers, working with the police, to shut down illegal ones. So we've had additional resources, and basically, we went up and above the current complement to assist in doing some of this work, but obviously, our plan is to hire two additional members to assist in this work.
So could I ask then, since this through ACGO, whether or not you have come forward, or if there's any past reports, have we hired additional staff for the expansion of LCBO or brewery retail centers in our community? Because I am equating the legalized cannabis to same thing as LCBO and Brewers Retail, and location and those issues, so, and you indicated that the process is the same, so help me understand, did we hire additional staff for that purpose as well?
Through the mayor, we have had additional staff put into our One Stop, and if you recall, shortly after I came here, I asked for additional staff, a licensing administrator, to assist in the workload, and that was severalfold, in particular, about licensing, but that, we had one person directly attributed to dealing with LCBO matters. And that was back in 2014, and we still have that body there.
Thank you, and in response to a question that I had asked you before, you had indicated, so I just want to make sure that I'm accurately reflecting my memory from the last meeting, that the, I keep getting around this, the ACGO?
AG.
AGCO.
AGO?
CO.
AGCO, thank you.
All Gaming.
AGCO. So the AG, but you had indicated the AGCO, in your humble opinion, has done an excellent job in regulating and policing their responsibilities over the, for example, liquor stores.
Through the mayor, that is correct.
Thank you. Now, to the finance side, I think there are concerns, and, you know, we talk about the 100 million access and the opportunity for the community, but the rollout right now is only, you know, seven licenses in the southwestern region, four of the applicants have happened to be from Hamilton, but it doesn't imply they're coming to Hamilton. Actually, I should probably ask Jason Thorne that question first. There is no suggestion for a moment, even if we opt in, that these particular people that may be from Hamilton, knowing that they got all, that region goes all the way to Waterloo, Cambridge, Kitchener, it's a pretty big region, is it not?
Through the chair, that's correct, and the suggestion that of those seven, four may choose to locate in Hamilton if Hamilton were opt in, we're just basing that on media reports, they've spoken to some of, I understand, they've spoken to some of the licensees or some people in the industry, we have no certainty that that actually is the number that would choose to come into Hamilton if Hamilton opts in.
Is it a possibility it could be less?
Through the chair, a possibility it could be zero, or it could be all seven.
Yep, thank you. I just want to make sure that that's not locked in. So back to the finance piece, one of the reasons they justify that is because of the lack of regulated government-grown cannabis, and so they're limited, the licenses, I think it's 25 across the province of Ontario. By doing that, that does affect their projections, the original projections, on the revenue being generated for the province of Ontario. Has there been any analysis on that?
Yeah, so through the chair, the provincial budget would have been calculated last March, would have been available last March, so whatever assumptions were made at that time.
So in those assumptions, was that including 25 dispensaries, was that including, like, what was the methodology in the determination in regards to those estimates, do we know?
Yeah, so through the chair, I don't know, there are original assumptions that they put together. I know that things have changed since the original announcement of the legalization of cannabis.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, that bit concerns me. Now, the last piece is, I have been getting some calls, and I'm not clear, and I don't know if this will be through Jason Thorne more likely, we have a high amount of immigrant population, or students, that attend our universities, our colleges, and we've got one of the largest international private schools in the country, probably in North America. They have raised concerns about the fact that in many of the countries, that they're marketing their people that come to our community, are coming from much more conservative countries, and there may be concerns, and they believe it's going to have an impact on their ability to attract international students to our universities, colleges, and international schools. Have we had discussions in that regard with McMaster, and Mohawk, and Columbia International Schools, to get a better understanding of what the fears are and what their estimates are in the impact they may result?
Through the chair, to my knowledge, we haven't heard that feedback come into us, we didn't explicitly reach out to them through the consultations for specific meetings, so no, I have not heard that.
Okay, so I just wanted to put out that there might be some work we need to do on that front, regardless of what position this council takes, well, regardless, actually, if we opt in, obviously, there's going to be a lot of work we're going to have to do in the respect to the international student programs at each of our post-secondary institutions in this community, so I want to highlight that. Just looking at, oh, so opting in, we get 500,000, thereabouts, then 600,000, or thereabouts, and then 50% of the excess of 100 million dollars would be distributed amongst communities that opt in, is that correct?
So through the chair, yes.
And if we opt in later, all that revenue is lost, is that correct?
So through the chair, I would suggest, yes.
Thank you.
No, to be clear, we don't lose the first round, because we all get that, we lose the second two pieces, which is the funding that'll come in April, that's 600,000, and the share of the excise tax. Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to use my opportunity just to do a quick summary of what I think I heard, just so it's clear in my mind. Number one is through you to the deputy, Dan, the 683 to 769,000 is a cost just for the illegal, doesn't cover opting or opting, correct?
Through your chair, that's correct.
And did I also hear you say that if we decide to opt in, there's no additional police costs? Say it again, if we opt in?
Yes.
There's no additional police costs?
No, there will always be costs, as long as there are illegal dispensaries.
No, assuming you shut down all the illegals?
Right.
And if we opt in, is there any additional police costs?
Well, it depends, that's the, the answer is, it depends. If somebody decides to open up an illegal shop, then we'll have to deal with it. There is the monitoring costs, the associated periphery activity that might be related to legal dispensaries, I don't know, but if we get rid of the illegal ones, it'll take away that bigger number.
I understand that, but I'm trying to, just help me make the decision whether we opt in or opt out. Let me go to opt out, if we opt out, and you're successful, as I expect you will be, in shutting down all the illegals, there's no additional police costs if we opt out?
Not related to illegal dispensaries, because the illegal dispensaries will be gone.
The illegals, we know what your costs are for that.
Right.
So you get that shut down, so if we opt out, there's no additional policing for cannabis?
I'm sorry, Counselor, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking me.
Okay, let me start again. You've made it clear what it costs to shut down the illegals.
Correct.
That's in your report, you don't talk about the additional cost for policing if we opt in or opt out. So I'll start with opt out, because it's probably an easier answer. So if you do what we all expect you'll do, you shut down all the illegals, there'd be no additional cost for the city for policing if we opt out?
As long as there's no more illegal dispensaries.
That's true.
Yeah. Opting in or opting out doesn't affect what we do, and if I haven't been clear on that, I apologize, whether you opt in or opt out doesn't materially change what we do with the legal dispensaries, we still have to deal with them.
That's not what you're after.
No, it's not, it's not what I'm asking.
Is there a policing cost over and above that, day to day, day in and day out, opt in or opt out, what additional policing cost would there be for you monitoring illegal cannabis, use, consumption, driving, all of that stuff?
Well, sure, there will be costs for, associated to impaired driving, associated to other infractions that take place under the act in regards to consuming cannabis or cannabis products, there will be costs, but the costs here are related to illegal dispensaries.
I get the illegals, I think all members of council get the legal side, and you itemized that very clearly on your report.
So.
I'm trying to understand what the difference in policing cost is, opting or opt out?
I mean, I'm happy to do another report that gives you the costs, the potential estimated costs of cannabis once we, or depending which way you go, but, I mean, we have other activity other than related to dispensaries, so there is other drug activity going on in the city that we have to deal with, and, you know, we will continue to deal with that. So, yeah, is there costs related to drug activity in the city of Hamilton that relates to cannabis, whether you opt in or opt out, there will be some costs, I don't have that number for you today.
Would it be different if we opt in or opt out? What's the, probably the fourth time, Mr. Mayor, I've asked this question, it'd be nice if I could just get a yes or a no.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Is there a difference in cost for policing if we opt in or opt out?
Through your chair. The cost is still going to be there, so the answer is no.
Okay, so there's no additional costs if we decide to opt in?
Through your chair.
Versus opting out?
Opting in or opting out, the decision made by council today, is not going to affect the cost of us dealing with illegal cannabis.
Hey, thank you, I got it. And so I'm going to leave you alone for a while now, deputy, and I'm going to go on to, so if we decide to opt in, through you to Mr. Leanhurst, can, you will not be able to license some cards?
Through the mayor, that's correct, we have no licensing authority.
Why do you need two additional staff if you're not issuing any licenses to enforce that?
Through the mayor, if we opt in, there'll have to be work done to ensure that the locations that are selected by the applicant through the AGCO conform with the legislation. We could do nothing.
Won't that be a responsibility?
We could do nothing, but the timelines that are given to the community and this council will be restricted so that AGCO will probably get no comments from the community or this council if we don't put resources towards it. So to opt in, there'll be resources to ensure that this council is heard by the province, as well as the community is heard. By opting out, we could just continue on to the work that we have been doing before, but again, by us moving forward on the illegals, we don't have the capacity to continue that work. And part of the funding was for transitional to assist communities, and that's why we put in the funding request. So I hope that's clarified.
This probably will be a debate for the budget meeting, and whether, because I thought planning was the one that responded to the gaming commission, or, you know, managed building permits, and building or planning. But, so on the licensing side, so if we opt in today, that we cannot issue licenses, so there's an issue, then if some operator is maybe selling to people under the age of 19, we can't pull their license because we don't have a license with them. I know you'll say that's the province's responsibility to deal with that, but we heard the same thing for the cannabis growers, and Health Canada will regulate this, but Health Canada says, on the odor issue, oh, we don't get involved in that. And so I'm a little skeptical that we can't have our own licenses to protect children in the area. The 150-meter radial separation, yes, that's currently still in place, through you to Mr. Thorne?
So through the chair, yes, so the province, that's in the provincial legislation, so they've identified 150-meter radial separation from schools only.
Okay, which is about 400, in fact, 500 feet, 400 feet, and they can go in any commercial area in the city, I think you've already answered that question, and other than possible additional excise tax, which our CFO says he can't quantify at this time, there's no additional revenue for us after two years, other than a possible excise tax uptake.
Through the chair, the provinces, all of the funding the province has announced to date is for the initial two-year period, they have not said what will happen in the years three and beyond.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Danko, first time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For Appendix C in the report that we have here, the economic uplift from permitting cannabis retail stores, just like to delve into these projections a little bit more. So we have two projections here, the one is for a small, low-end store of just over 1.6 million, and for a larger retail operation, as high as 3.5 million. So my first question is, is this projected to be an annual benefit, or is this kind of a one-time economic uplift when a store opens?
Okay, on the financial side, Glenn?
Through the chair, to the counselor, so if you look at the numbers that we provided, that specific number, those two numbers are the one-time, first time. However, a portion of it, the largest portion of it actually, is the ongoing salaries. So if you wanted to separate out the part that talked about renovations, a new build, you know, that would be bringing it down to an annual. So you would still have the wages, which is very significant, and you'd have the marketing carry on.
So we're looking at a fairly substantial initial economic uplift, followed by an ongoing annual benefit as well. How do the numbers that we're projecting for? ongoing annual benefit as well. How do the numbers that we're projecting for cannabis retail compare to a similar retail establishment, whether it's a coffee shop or some other similar-sized retail?
Glenn?
Through the chair. So the line that says taxation is irrespective of use, right? That's sort of the generation, taxation that a store of that size of any type would generate. Where we start to differentiate from a coffee shop, to your example, would be in the wages. We use the wages that the speaker used at the last council presentation, $25 an hour for staff, 35 for management. That is considerably higher than you might expect in a coffee shop. Also, the marketing expenditure is considerably higher than what you might expect in a coffee shop. A lot of this will come down to brand recognition and marketing for this product. So we went with what we thought was a fairly conservative estimate on marketing.
That's pretty impressive numbers here as far as, you know, the wages in particular that we're projecting. So is there a ceiling to the level of economic development or uplift that we're expecting? I guess what I'm getting at is this is per store. Is there a market limit or a projection to what that ceiling is for what the market can bear in terms of the number of stores in total?
Through the chair, certainly not from our department. I think that still remains to be seen. Part of it is due to how much supply will there be. Clearly, the issue right now seems to be there isn't enough supply. How many licenses will be issued by the provincial government? So it isn't anything that we could offer an opinion on.
So eventually, we're going to have more than just what's in the lottery now. It'll be a completely open market. But at this point, there's no real indication of what the upper limit could be, although I'd suggest with just basing that on the number of illegal stores, that's probably somewhere around 100-plus. Would you agree that this, these projections in the projected economic uplift are fairly substantial in terms of business within the city of Hamilton?
Through the chair, they're substantial when compared to other small businesses. That's correct. And that's mostly because of the amount of money they spend on wages and what they would spend on advertising. If it's just four stores and never changes, the total quantum is not significant. I mean, four times, you know, a million and a half or something in a city this size is not huge. When you start to look at potentially 80, 90, 100 stores, to your numbers, Counselor, yeah, that starts to add up. That's for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Farr. No, your first time. Your second time? Okay, sorry. Counsel Marilla, my apologies.
All right, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so let's just, I want to focus on a couple things. Firstly, I want to reemphasize the fact that I'm supportive of these retail outlets. I'm just not supportive of the present deal. Because there's a lot of misinformation.
Can we save that for the debate, though?
No, no, I just need to emphasize.
I know, I know. Everybody wants to make their emphasis points, but-
Only because-
We're getting to that. And I see a smile on your face, so you're going to work with me on this one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Specific question.
So getting back to the financials, okay. Can we get some clarity? Because I know that there's a guaranteed amount that we're all going to get regardless if we opt in or opt out. So through you, Mr. Mayor, can we get a number on what does everyone get regardless of opting in or opting out?
So, yeah, so through the chair. So if, so opting out or opting in, municipalities get the share of the 15 million. In our case, it's $574,000. If we choose to opt out, that second payment will get $5,000. That's the minimum that we'll get if we opt out. We then won't be eligible for a share of that $10 million unforeseen circumstances. We wouldn't be eligible for that if we opt out. And we won't be eligible for the share of the 50% of the provincial surplus federal excise tax duty during the first two years.
But nobody knows what that amount is.
Right. So through the chair, so if we opt in, our $574,000, which is the first payment of the first 15 million dollars, we've estimated our share of the second payment, another $15 million, our share of 600,000-plus. And that number will change as we find out how many municipalities opt in and opt out.
The difference between opting in and opting out is $600,000 or lower over a two-year period. That's all that's guaranteed, is two years.
So through the chair, at this, yeah, at this time, so we know more information.
Oh, it's April. So the next payment is April?
Through the chair, April.
This year.
Okay, but the difference between opting in and opting out over a two-year guaranteed period is 600,000. That's what we're basically dealing with.
So through the chair, that's only related to the two funds. Then there is that additional $10 million fund that we've unforeseen for circumstances. We don't know how that's going to be allocated.
I mean, that we know guaranteed. We don't know. That's a projection based on assumptions. Just based on what we actually know, what is the difference between the in and out version? Not what we hope for. Because I hope I win the lottery on the weekend, but I'm not sure if that's going to happen.
Yeah, I think he's trying to answer that, but you're not satisfied with the answer.
Yeah, and so through the chair, that, and that fourth fund that we were talking about, the federal excise duty over the first two years, the surplus over the, if it exceeds $100 million, that 50% will be shared with the municipalities that opt in. So that would be available to-
And what would that number be? Let's assume it's-
So based, so through the chair, so based on the information that was in their budget, I may have got some of these numbers wrong earlier. So they had suggested in the 2018, 2019 budget, the excise tax duty was 35 million, and in 2019, 2020 would be 80 million. So that totals $115 million. So the surplus over $100 million is 15 million. So we could assume that our share, 50% of that, would be the same, $574,000, like we're getting for our first payment.
Okay, so we're talking about a two-year deal approximately, and I'll even round it off to the highest number, and that's 600. So 574 for the first year, and now 600,000 for the second year, guaranteed. And that's the only potential guarantee we have. And that's not even guaranteed, to be honest. But let's assume it is. So after the third year rolls around, our operating costs, through you, Mr. Mayor, are still in place. Yet there's no guarantee of what, or not even mention of what potentially might be going to be forward to two municipalities for operating costs beyond the first two years. That's correct, right?
So through the chair, correct. We don't know what is happening beyond the first two years.
Okay, so now if we opt out temporarily, and I know I spoke with the mayor of Branford-
So now you're going to debate that. So-
No, no. If we opt out temporarily, and I spoke with the mayor of Branford, who put together a list of other mayors, and over 3 million people within that category. So if we were to opt out and then lobby the province collectively as the 20 municipalities that might be opting out, after that second year, we could, in essence, technically negotiate a better deal if, for instance, millions of people choose to opt out temporarily. I'm just wondering. Through you, Mr.-
You're asking me a question?
I'm asking staff. Would that not be a sage approach?
Okay, you're getting into debate, Ari. I'm sorry. I'm going to cut you off on that one, because, you know, we're 10 minutes away from the debate, and you can get into all of that if you want.
I will.
Let's just ask specific questions, questioning the numbers that they've got on the table.
Okay, so let's go with what we know. We know that the difference between opting in and opting out is simply $500,000. And that we can opt, if we opt in now, we can never, ever opt out. But if we opt out now, we can opt in later. So we know, that's what we know, and that's what the reality is. So 25 licenses are now being issued, correct? And the result of the lack of supply is leading to the minimal amount of licenses. Through you, Mr. Mayor, does anybody have any idea? Let's say Doug Ford hooks up with the cartel next week, and all of a sudden, he has more than enough supply, and he probably has those connections. And let's say that he gets that supply, and all of a sudden, is there any limit on how many licenses could actually be issued?
Jason?
Through the chair, ultimately, no. There's a provision that any license holder can operate 75 stores. But we haven't had any indication from the province as to after this initial 25 licenses are distributed. If and when or how additional licenses may be available in the future, we don't know.
Okay, so let's go with based on what we know now. So the difference between opting in and opting out is $600,000. But if we opt out now, we can opt in later and perhaps get a better deal. And if we do, if we opt in now, we potentially are looking at an endless amount of licenses that could pop up in this community with absolutely no control except the 150-meter radius from schools. Through you, Mr. Mayor, can I get confirmation on that?
You've loaded that one. Jason?
So through the chair, I can only repeat my earlier answer, that we don't have any indication as to, once these initial 25 licenses are issued, if there will be more in the next two years. If there will be more, we don't know how many more there will be. We don't know.
Thank you. Counsel Marilla.
So if we don't know, why, okay, I'll deal with that.
Save it.
Okay. I'll deal with that, because it's just not a prudent measure to not, no one make a decision of this magnitude. But having said this, the other thing that's really killing me is the fact that it's Doug Ford that's giving us this option, and all the progressives in the city are supporting a Doug Ford initiative. I can't believe why they think he's right on this one when he's wrong on everything else.
Save that one, too. 10 minutes from now, you can share that again with us. You want us to, can we go to the other questions that are after? You're done? So questions. Now we've got a long list of more questions. Hang on. So Esther Pauls? Hang on, you need to hit your button one more time, and I need to dial you in.
Nobody can, but through the mayor, there's only 25 stores, and we might get one, because all four that are here might go somewhere else. Windsor, London, Niagara Falls, wherever. There's only seven, right? Yes.
The estimate is potentially four is what the media believes might be.
But they don't have to operate in Hamilton. So I'm just wondering, what time, does anyone know the time limit the government has, whether they're going to issue more? Is there a time limit? Is it two years?
Jason?
Through the chair, they haven't provided any timeline for when they may issue any more beyond those initial 25 licenses.
So my thought is, if it's going to be maybe two years down the road, we just have one, we could deal with one, and then, you know, try to get the illegals out. I'm just wondering, it's better to have one legal than not legal?
You're doing what I asked Sam not to do as well with this debate.
Okay, so the question was, we do not know.
We don't know, and it's defined as a supply issue. So the only reason they've limited it to 25 is because believe that that's what the supply can accommodate. If the supply goes up, the belief is the number of stores would go up as well.
So nobody knows the time limit?
No.
Okay.
Is that it, Counsel? Thank you. Counsel Farr?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. To anybody on staff through you, has the premier or anybody in his office indicated at any time between the last time we debated this, to staff or otherwise, that he's committed to renegotiating the current offer on the table?
Any indications of a change in their direction?
Through the chair, no. Staff has not been contacted by the province to negotiate any changes.
Thank you.
Through you, thanks. Through you to Dan, again. Again, appreciating that you're here. I moved a motion, Janet, was it over a year ago, I guess? We asked the police to answer some questions as to why all these illegal shops were occurring in the community. And obviously, with the Amsterdam label and all of that, this was right around the time where it was really above and beyond any other community municipality in Canada. So they came, to my recollection, Dan, and I need your help here, and I believe what I heard, and certainly we've talked about this answer at the BIA table, International Village specifically, many times since, that it's an enforcement issue for you. It's a priority issue as it relates to enforcement. You have other obligations, and so just shutting them down all at once was hard because you just don't have the resources to do that. Can you help me with where we were about a year ago when we asked Hamilton Police Services to answer what's going on with all these illegal shops?
Through you, Mayor. So the illegal shops are, as you say, are a priority for us amongst all of the other priorities that we have.
Okay.
And we have to balance a lot of things that are going on, as you know. So what we have seen lately is with the addition and assistance of the provincial team, we've seen, and our participation with that team, we've seen a more unified response and that kind of thing. So it is a priority, and it is a resource issue. If it was as easy as going and shutting them all down tomorrow, we would go do that. But I think I've been through the process, so we have an understanding of that.
Okay, you have, and you don't need to repeat it. So through you, but as a follow-up to those answers, you've provided more than once to that. You said, quote, "doesn't matter, opt in, opt out, we'll continue to enforce," end quote. So to that point, though, has Hamilton Police Services not contemplated a dedicated enforcement to this issue, understanding that whether we're inees or outees on this issue today, every one of us, including the mayor, I'm sure, wants to see the demise of these illegal operators? So are you not at all, as Hamilton Police Services, trying to, or at least discussing, a dedicated enforcement to the prevalent issue that we all agree needs to be taken care of?
Deputy Dan?
And through you, Mayor. So what I did say in regards to whether you opt in or opt out is that it doesn't change the way that we deal with illegal dispensaries. So certainly, we could make dispensaries the priority. We could limit other police services that we're obligated to provide and proceed against dispensaries, and other things could fall by the wayside. We have an obligation to enforce all of the priorities and deal with all the priorities that we have. And we have to balance that against the public safety needs in the city. So I think, you know, pushing everything else to the side and just concentrating on illegal dispensaries wouldn't be practical. And to your point, we don't have the resources to do everything.
Okay, but to my point now, and I don't want you to push anything aside, and I don't want to actually come off as I'm trying to tell the police out of police that's not in our purview as a council. It's not even in the purview of the Hamilton Police Services Board. That said, isn't it safe to assume that you'll get greater enforcement of this particular issue, illegal storefront operations, illegal cannabis, God knows where it's coming from, if you had the budget? Through you, Chair.
Well, certainly, if we had more officers and more money to spend on that, and we increased our allotment of officers, then we could provide more enforcement.
You don't have the budget now. It's not in your budget, as you indicated to me earlier, but that's just what I wanted to get on the floor. And finally, just for clarity, very quickly to Brian, we're hearing a previous speaker say, "The only thing we know is 600K in the second installment if we opt in." That's just not correct. True? Through you.
All right, just to clarify again.
So through the chair, the letter from the minister suggests that there are additional funds that could be available if the Ontario's portion of the federal excise duty on the recreational cannabis over the first two years of legalization exceeds $100 million. So that would be available, 50% of that surplus would be available to municipalities that opt in by January 22, 2019.
Thank you. You done? Thank you. Counsel Whitehead?
Yeah, just to the deputy, we have, and you've been very successful, what you call the, I believe it's POP programs. Can you describe what that is?
Through you, Chair. Yeah, problem-oriented policing projects are something that we use within the Hamilton Police Service, where we put a plan together to combat or address certain issues, whether it be crime-related or quality of life issues. We use them for a myriad of responses to a myriad of issues.
Have we set up a POP program for the illegal dispensaries?
In a sense, we have. I spoke earlier about Project Pender, through you, Chair. That was, in a sense, a problem-oriented policing project, and we did a great deal of enforcement in regards to that. We currently, in a sense, have a project running with the provincial joint forces unit, and so the answer is yes.
Thank you. To Jason, you know, we have the survey, and it was briefly talked about, you reported on it. I just read the report from Burlington, and again, the numbers are fairly consistent. Majority, 65% in Burlington, are supporting the dispensaries, legal dispensaries. But what we didn't talk about is that the ones that opted in, such as Ottawa, Toronto, and beyond, they also have further caveats in opting in, which are quite aligned with the issues that we've raised, whether it's revenue, or separation, or more control. They have provided those additional considerations to the province of Ontario. Are you aware of that?
So through the chair, yes. One of the recommendations actually that was made by AMO, and this was in our original staff report in December, is if a municipality chooses to opt in, that you also adopt what they called a policy- they called a policy statement, which was a set of criteria through which a municipality would comment on an application for a license. So, we had attached a proposed policy statement to our December report that set out some of what staff thought those criteria might be in the city of Hamilton. And they included, for example, a more substantial setback of 300 meters, and not just from schools, but from other types of sensitive uses. So, that was contained in the staff's proposed policy statement, and other municipalities have adopted similar statements. It is important to note that those are not binding on the province. Those are not part of the... Those are not regulatory requirements. Those would be the... An articulation of the preferences of the municipality. And if Hamilton were to opt in and to adopt such a policy statement, that's what staff would use in commenting on any individual store locations that may come forward.
So, whether you opt in or opt out, all the municipalities agreed to that policy virtually, as far as we know, have agreed to that policy statement, and that discussion and negotiation would be ongoing. Would that be a correct statement?
So, through the Chair, each of the opt-in municipalities, many of them have adopted policy statements. I have not reviewed all of them to know how consistent they are, if they're exactly the same, but a number of them have adopted a policy statement. If a municipality opts out, then a policy statement is not needed because you would not have any applications for stores in your municipality.
I think the argument is if they opt out, the one reason why they're opting out is because they want to see those very same things instituted in the implementation of the illegal dispensaries. So, I was a little confused about the numbers. I thought there was actually three revenue sources if we opt in now, and now it's been cut down to two.
No, it's three. Okay. Once again, so let's have it for clarity sake, because there are actually three...
That's what I thought was three.
...funding opportunities. One guaranteed right now, which we know we're going to get out of a $15 million pool on a per capita basis. The next round is on a per capita basis as well if we opt in. Estimate now is $600,000. There's a $10 million pool for unforeseen circumstances that could be tapped into for things like additional policing costs or additional licensing costs. And then there's the 50% share of the excise tax, over $100 million that we could tap into, that we would share a 50-50 with all the other municipalities on an ongoing basis. Those are the three monetary...
Just want to make sure it's absolutely clear, because it was coming across as only a $600,000 difference, when it really is, it's higher than that. Thank you.
Thank you. John Paul Danko, Counselor Danko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick point of clarification regarding the timing of the two years for the excise tax. So, my understanding from representatives of the province is that the clock started ticking on that back in October. So, the two years is not actually two years from when the retail stores come online. It's two years from when it was legalized in October. So, that runs out in October 2020. Is that correct?
Want to have clarity on that?
Yeah, so through the Chair, I'm not aware of that. I'm not aware of anybody else on SLT.
We can double-check on that, but you might be right.
I'm pretty sure I'm right. Thank you.
Let's say you are. Okay. Okay. Anything else that you want to ask? Okay. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some clarification. So, the two pages, page one and two of the economic uplift, that's really reporting on one store. And what was the projection from the province and the city in terms of how many stores we anticipate Hamilton could actually handle?
What?
Through the Chair. Absolutely, Counselor. The example that was given was on a per-store basis, so you could just extend that out, multiply it by however number you think we might get. As you'll see, the examples are kind of two ends of the spectrum, a small store in an existing building, and then a larger store in a purpose-built building. So, we've given you the range. If you wanted to sort of assume it'd be half and half, take a number in between, multiply it by the ultimate number of stores. Counselor Danko had thought maybe, you know, 80 to 100 is the right number. I don't know if any of us have a number of where we think this could end up, because so much of it is driven by supply and demand.
And so, if we looked at the black market and how many stores they had operating, and they just kept popping up, so there must be a market beyond that. We hit 50 or 60 at one point, I believe, if that's not... 80? Okay, I was in error, 80. It just... It's interesting, because when you actually do the numbers, then you're looking, you know, for 25 stores, looking at 81 million to 87 million. When you look at Ottawa's economic uplift, they're talking 200 million for 89 stores. So, it's very similar to where our numbers are, and it's really the question of what the market can bear. Is that a fair statement? Over to... I guess, Glenn, you did the financing side, sorry.
Through the Chair, yes, I would say that's a fair statement. The other thing to remember when you look at that forecast that we did on what a store means to the economy, is look at the number of people and employees. And again, we just used the example of that young lady who presented to you previously, 25 people making a minimum of $25. That's pretty big money in this city. 10 stores is 250 people. 20 stores is 500 people. 40 stores is 1,000 people making a minimum of $25 an hour. My division works very hard to try and find new employers who would bring 1,000 jobs that would pay $25 an hour.
Yes, rhetorically, I'd say that would be a lot of great jobs through the city. Thank you.
Okay, folks, I think we've exhausted the question. So, I want a motion, a verbal motion to receive the report as it sits. Moved by Whitehead, seconded by none, all in favor. Counselor Murula, you wish to present your motion respecting dispensaries for recreational cannabis retail sale. You have a mover, you have a seconder, I believe, who's not quite in the room right now, but pick another.
My apologies.
Sorry, my apologies. There we go. Alcimurula?
All right, so it's a move by myself, seconded by Counselor Jackson. Whereas the province of Ontario has, through their constitutional authority under the Federation of Canada, pursued the legalization of recreational cannabis use in Ontario, whereas the social costs have been established by the city of Hamilton and Hamilton Police Services. Whereas the legalization of cannabis in Ontario will increase revenue significantly to the province of Ontario and the federal government of Canada, whereas nearly half of the city of Hamilton's operating budget is dedicated to provincially mandated programs with little or no authority from council. And whereas a lack of sustainable revenue sharing from the province of Ontario related to the retail sale of cannabis, two municipalities will amplify the regressive downloading crisis in Hamilton. Therefore, be it resolved that cannabis retail stores not be permitted to operate in the city of Hamilton in accordance with the Cannabis License Act 2018 until a sustainable revenue-sharing formula is established between the province of Ontario and the city of Hamilton. The city manager be directed to provide written notice prior to January 22, 2019, to the registrar, no later than three business days after the resolution is passed, and that not later than January 22, 2019, to advise that the city of Hamilton will not permit cannabis retail stores in Hamilton. That the estimated first phase of funding, any amount of $574,493, to be funded from the Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund for costs that directly relate to the legalization of recreational cannabis be allocated as outlined in Appendix A attached heretofu. D, that council reaffirm its request to the Hamilton Police Services Board that Hamilton Police Service continue to aggressively close down all illegal cannabis dispensaries located within the city of Hamilton. E, that the mayor write to the premier of Ontario, appropriate ministers, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario to communicate that it is the city's position that the province's approach to the regulation of private cannabis retail stores in Ontario must ensure that municipalities have the ability to regulate the following in a manner that is appropriate to the municipality. One, separation distances from sensitive uses such as parks, schools, daycare, and healthcare facilities. Two, over-concentration of dispensaries in one area of the city. Three, the total number of dispensaries citywide and within particular areas of the city. Four, general issues of urban design such as location of entrances and transparency of facades, advertising and signage, hours of operation, property standards compliance, and the ability to restrict or prohibit operations that routinely violate municipal standards such as noise, nuisance, or property standards. Mr. Mayor, clearly, and again, to reemphasize, I've advocated the decriminalization of cannabis since 1989. As I mentioned earlier, I'm an addictions counselor by trade. I believe that from a social perspective, it speaks volumes, and it's very justified and merited. You've not gone the approach of legalization. I agree that the medicinal value of cannabis is strikingly positive, and one that we need to embrace and try to eliminate the stigma attached to CBD and cannabis because of its value for a number, a number of health reasons. Obviously, the THC component related to recreation we use is a little bit different in that it's psychoactive and obviously has mood-altering effects, but so does alcohol. And when you compare the two, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Alcohol is far more devastating to this society than cannabis has ever been in the history of our province and city. And in saying that, however, it's important that we also recognize that although under the confederation that we have, that the province and the federal government collectively made the decision, because Ontario could have opted out, as could have other provinces. So, although the feds have legalized it, Ontario needed to buy into it for it to become an effect, and that's what the federation's all about. And for years, Mr. Mayor, as you know, my crux related to this issue is the fact that cities or municipalities that make up this province and make up this country don't have the same constitutional authority and/or rights. And because of that, we continually end up with the short end of the stick. And again, in the past, I've complained about this to a point of nauseam, as you all know, but they've never asked us in the past to voluntarily submit to more regressive forms of taxation, which, again, this is before us. So, this is the first time that nearly in 20 years on council that the province has said to us, "Listen, folks, we're going to ask you to voluntarily compound this regressive form of taxation onto the most vulnerable in our communities." Because as you know, with property values increasing, rents are increasing, and as those taxes increase, it coincides with the property values, and those rents are increasing accordingly. So, we have some of the most marginalized people subsidizing provincially-funded programs that should be dealt with in a progressive manner province-wide rather than the municipality. So, for the first time, we have the province saying to us, and I have to say that the previous government, on the LRT file, I agreed with them. I think they did a fabulous job, and a number of other issues. But on the cannabis one, they were bang on. They were prudent. They weren't asking us whether or not we wanted to buy in. They were telling us that they had an agreement with the feds, and this is the way it was going to roll out. And it was going to be publicly funded and publicly operated, and there were going to be two locations in Hamilton. And they reached out to me, and one of them was supposed to be at the center mall. I had no problem with it. And I, at that point, unbeknownst to me, I didn't realize that we weren't going to get... I'm not sure what the revenue sharing was going to be with them, but that wasn't even a discussion at the time. So, all of a sudden, the new government comes in, and we're flying on the seat of our... We're just simply... It's like a bolt-on china shop. We have no idea what's going on. They're privatizing. One day, they tell us one thing, the next is changing. The inconsistency and unpredictability is creating what I believe to be ultimately chaos throughout this province, because at first, as you mentioned, the supply is just not there based on the demand. They only have 25 licenses now, but who knows that within six months to a year or two, that, again, they deal with the supply issue, which, once they do, they're going to have an abundance of supply. And these licenses are going to be rolling out the door with absolutely no input from us except comments. We're going to become a commenting agency, and it really means absolutely nothing. Last time I recall, I never recall commenting on any particular license related to liquor where we prevented it from happening. It did when we worked with the police on it, but never just as a community or neighborhood initiative. Sure, if there's a criminal element, we've come forward and say, "This license should be revoked." That we've done. But when applications come forward, even when we've asked for it to be denied, they've never been denied. Not to mention, when we're a commenting agency on environmental issues or other issues, the province basically controls the day, and they know it, and they continue to do it. So, when you look at the financials, and what we found out is that regardless if we opt in or opt out, we know one thing. We know that we're eligible for the $574,000. The other guarantee is that for an additional year, and potentially less, as Counselor Danko referred to, that there might be additional funds. But really, it's an unknown. So, I'm not quite sure how we opt in and sign on the dotted line, not understanding what the future holds. So, if we opt out now and work with, for instance, the mayor of Branford and their council and other councils who've reached out, and now we're totally... Almost 3 million in population of all the cities that have opted out, that market's massive. And when you're negotiating, you don't buy in and then start negotiating. You create a leverage, and that leverage is based on the fact that by the end of this week, or by January 22, there may be 5 million people in all the municipalities that have opted out. And I can assure you that the province here is looking at the GST and the revenue, and they're going to have no choice but to renegotiate the deal. The other thing I'm really disillusioned by is I'm not quite sure why we even pay a fee into AMO any longer. Had AMO done their job on this file right at the beginning and reached out to every single municipality and said, "You know what, folks? Because they've agreed with the downloading file, they've endorsed all of our motions that we've brought forward about the fact that it's unsustainable and regressive in nature." Had they done their job and collectively went to all municipalities and said, "Listen, this is an opportunity for us representing these municipalities to come together and advocate on your behalf to ensure we get a better deal." Why they're silent on this, if not even endorsing it, is really irresponsible and beyond comprehension, and really a failure. And I'd like to talk about whether or not we should even continue, because I can't see, I can't recall ever receiving anything tangible from being involved with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. So, what's before us is really clear. We have a choice to opt in and not control our own destiny and receive a guarantee of two years, and the difference between opting in and opting out, as staff confirmed, is $600,000. Or opt out, use that $600,000 as an investment to control where these licenses are going to be located in the future, and whether or not we can collectively work with the other mayors of close to 20 municipalities in Ontario who will be opting out and are willing to work with us in collectively approaching Queen's Park and saying, "We need a better deal." This is not, again, about whether or not we should have cannabis retail outlets. This is about a deal, a business deal, that at present is not in the best interest of the city. And the fact that he's asked us to make this decision, to me, is politically driven, because if, for any reason, this thing implodes down the road and we have some sort of chaos that's created, he'll respond and simply said, "Listen, you made your decision, you made your bed, now you gotta lie in it." I'm not prepared to risk that. This is a pig in a poke, and one that can be prevented by prudent incremental implementation of a plan that with the previous government made sense, and with this government, it's just nonsense. And I appreciate your time, and I hope that what's before us is supported. And again, it's not about the moral issues surrounding cannabis, as I mentioned. It's all about a bad deal that's not in the best interest of the city, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So, extra latitude, because it was your motion, but if we could manage our time, we'll be here all night if we don't, but not that I'm going to manage anyone. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, philosophically, I think I'm with many of my colleagues here on the table. I listened carefully to Counselor Pauls just before Christmas, and Counselor Jackson. I talked to Counselor Partridge. Our concern about the direct legalization of cannabis, it's still a concern. It happened. We don't really... I think a number of us are really quite concerned, because we really don't know what's going to happen in the future. don't know what's going to happen in the future, what the impact is going to be on our young people. But that decision's been made. We don't have the opportunity to debate it philosophically now. It's done. It is a legal, highly regulated product. It's available through provincial online stores. Retail stores are going to be licensed and highly regulated also. So it is what it is. It's here. The question is whether or not we can be taking advantage of it or not. Our police enforcement, our bylaw enforcement, nuisance complaints will continue whether we opt in or out. We heard that from staff. It was very clear that's the way it's going to be. The black market is not just going to disappear overnight. There has to be police enforcement and that will continue. I found it a little bit frustrating when there was a lot of talk about radio separation because there is no radio separation on bars, there's no radio separation on LCBOs, there's no radio separation on wine stores or beer stores. And before I was elected to office, there was a bar at the end of my street that was in spitting distance of Billy Green School and St. Paul. You could actually see it from the bar. And every day when we walked our kids to school, we would see the drunk stumbling out and getting in their car and driving away. And I regularly complained to the AGCO and they were constantly on top of it and eventually it was shut down. They never once got any letters or support from the school boards questioning why this was happening. And they've never asked for radio separation for bars and communities right across the road from schools. They're all over the city. So I don't understand that drive to increase the amount of radio separation beyond what the province is doing when we certainly have not been requesting it for liquor. And I agree with councillor McGurley. There's been far more damage from liquor and alcohol than there has been from cannabis over the years. When I looked at the funding that's available right now, the first phase was $15,576,000. Every municipality got that. It's coming. We already have received our portion of it, as a matter of fact. The second phase of the $15 million is based on, completely predicated on those municipalities who opt in. So 576 was the low end at the very beginning, so it may be more, it may be at 576, but that is the second phase. So there's two rounds of funding that we know one way or the other it's available. The $10 million was specifically for law enforcement. If they've underestimated the actual nuisance, the problems that this legalization is going to create, then municipalities can apply for it like a grant, which we've done many times through the AG in the province. And then the last one is the excise tax. The argument that is put before us today really is talking about, if I can sum it up, Mr. Mayor, is the potential to negotiate a sustainable funding source. That's what we're being asked to do. So opt out to negotiate that sustainable funding source. The report that staff provided gives us 78 municipalities so far that have opted in and 34 have opted out. And using those numbers as a projected ratio, we're going to see a little over 200 some odd municipalities opting in. We've lost the opportunity for any type of negotiation with the province with that number of municipalities opting in. As far as the province is concerned, if you opt in now, you take advantage of all these revenue sources. If you're opting out now, then these other municipalities who have opted in will pick up the slack and there'll be more stores there, there'll be more economic growth there. And we still have all of the issues that cannabis will bring to our community because they'll be coming home with the product that they've purchased outside of our jurisdiction. I guess fundamentally, if we opt out, we're really putting the total financial burden of law enforcement, nuisance enforcement, bylaw enforcement on our local taxpayers. And if we opt in, we get the advantage of those additional funding sources, but the calculations that I did based on Mr. Norton's report on economic uplift, at 50 stores, which is less than what was already operating here, we're talking $81 to $175 million a year in economic uplift. And we're talking 1,250 jobs paying more than $25 an hour. That's a significant, that's a factory. In the old days, that's a factory from the 1950s. That's a significant economic uplift in our community. And so if we say no, then those jobs will go to municipalities outside of our area. And I'm not on for that. I simply cannot say to the residents at home, "We're going to continue having you pay for all of the law enforcement, all of the nuisance, all of the bylaw enforcement while other municipalities are having more jobs, more economic uplift, and we're going to opt out under the hope, the prayer, that we can negotiate somehow a better deal than what has already been negotiated." I can't see it happening. So I'm going to vote opposed to my colleague's motion. I understand and respect his position completely and I hope that others will do the same thing and that we can actually embrace this as an opportunity for significant economic uplift in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I started off earlier today talking about, there's many times I actually agree with the move of this particular motion and some of the things he indicated in his presentation, I absolutely agree with. But where we separate, you know, and this is on past experience and I think the former speaker just captured it very nicely, we're not in a position or any leverage to negotiate. Let me just, you know, let's repeat this number, 19%, 78 communities. But let's talk about those communities for a moment. If you want to talk about leverage, and AMO knows this, one of the strongest leverages in regards, in respect to negotiate with the province of Ontario is Toronto because of the sheer population. But if you go through the list of communities that opted in, you know, Sudbury, Guelph, I'm just naming some of the higher populated areas, Kingston, London, North Bay, Orangeville, Peterborough, Ottawa, Toronto, and Elliott Lake. I had to say that because I wish it came from Elliott Lake, it's a small community.
Massive municipality.
Massive. My point is, and I think councillor Clark covered it, and sorry, I didn't mean to have it as a privileged point, but the reality is, is that there's too many communities already opting in to give us any leverage. So I don't know who you're negotiating with to try and get a better movement. Now, having said that, doesn't mean, and the whole premise was leverage, doesn't mean you stop negotiating. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that Toronto and Ottawa and many of the communities that are opting in are putting a lot of very strong policy statements. And the other piece that bothers me is, and I use the analogy of a union that went on strike because they thought they could do better. After four weeks on strike, thousands of dollars of salary lost, they got a set of boots. Was that four weeks worth it? Here's the question I have on this piece. Is it really worth us saying no now, losing the revenue that we know we can obtain to continue to deal and address the issues of illegal dispensaries in our community, or wait a couple of years? I believe Mrs. Saga had asked the province of Ontario directly, "We're going to opt out because we want to negotiate a better deal." And I think the response, as I hear it, was, "You're not opting in, so there is no better deal. You're better to be inside the tent and continue that pressure collectively as municipalities versus being outside the tent and thinking you're going to do better. I'd rather be inside the tent, Mr. Mayor, and negotiating, continue negotiating a better deal." Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brenda Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on the onset right now, I know many people who utilize this product for medicinal purposes. They have their prescriptions, they do their mail orders. So this is not against the product or for the product. What I've been hearing over and over again, if we opt in, then that will push the illegals and the illegal establishments out. If we opt in, there's money on the line. But I kept hearing whenever financial questions were being asked, it was very confusing for me, I don't know about anybody else, but I kept hearing a lot of "I don't knows" to the questions. So if we opt in and none of these happen, we don't have the privilege to opt back out. We're in, we're in. I heard it could be maybe one establishment, could be four, or it could be all 25. Just because they put another address down doesn't mean they're going to be settling in that township. They could be settling anywhere that they want to. I don't know about you, but I've got a lot of planning applications on my desk, numbered companies, and they have all different addresses on it. Not one of them are either in my ward or in the city of Hamilton. If we do opt out, we do have that option to opt in later. Yes, the money is on the side, but we still have that option to opt in later. This is the one time I really don't want to be the ambitious city. I don't want to be the leader or the pioneer in this. I seriously don't. I'm very comfortable to sit back and wait and see. Let's see how the other municipalities handle this. Let them be the pioneers on this and then we can opt in if we see that it is not all the horror stories we're hearing. It actually is what we think it's going to do. So I'm quite comfortable with opting out and waiting and see. So that's my vote for councillor Murillo's motion.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Farr.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to the mover. It's not ever fun being on the other side, but certainly he's been very passionate on this issue and he does have a professional expertise on cannabis. But I'm also glad that he reiterated, and others have here today, in his previous career, that this isn't about the moral issue. You and I have talked about this others and of course it came up at the last meeting we had. Cannabis is legal and whether you want to call it an opinion poll or a survey, whether here at home or across Canada, it's clear that the majority are cool with it here in Canada. So the motion before us, as Ben mentioned, asks us to hold off, to seek a better deal, one that answers and addresses, I guess, all or most of what we've already sent forward. The pot shop conditions, born in Hamilton anyway, as we already submitted to the province and are now actually contained, for the most part, in the policy statement appendix that's part of the approval, should we go the direction that staff has suggested, which is the opt-in direction. When we deal with the province, the mover has said here today, quote, "We continually end up on the short end of the stick," end quote, which I thought was interesting because the mover's also seeking, holding off for a better deal. So we're acknowledging in one breath that we're always shorted and then saying immediately thereafter, and with this motion, I say this respectfully, we got an opportunity to do a better deal. And I think for the most part, when I hear over the years now, the mover mentioned about that short end of the stick thing, I agree. And I actually agree here today. And therefore, I am feeling quite confident that there ain't no better deal to be had. And I asked those questions earlier and those questions were answered. The province, the premier, any of his people, no one has indicated that there's an opportunity down the road to do another deal. We had our opportunity. We got mere butt kiss, except for 150. Our 300-meter radius turned into 150 around schools for the most part. Everything else was shot down, but we got to include that in our policy statement. But on the money side, what we are learning here today, quite simply, and to conclude, Mr. Mayor, police have no budget for this issue. Planning has no real budget for this issue. Health has no budget for this issue. Opt in, we at least have a budget. Police have, I believe, if the police service board and police want to enforce at a greater capacity than they are now, and I'm not knocking how they've been enforcing to date, but they have no budget. They've already said that here today. It's not even in the coming budget. Then we have that opportunity to tackle what I think all of us here and many, many people in the community want us to get at. It's not about whether or not we support cannabis, it's whether or not we can just close these illegal operations down. So ultimately, to me, that's what the opt-in is all about. We have the opportunity, we will have the funds to address what planning needs, what health wants to do with the marketing and awareness for our kids especially, and hopefully the opportunity for police to get some special enforcement and special attention to what, regardless, opt-in, opt-out, to quote Dan, they continue to focus on, but I believe they'll be able to focus on at a greater level. And we'll get to the meat of the issue, which is to close down the illegal operations and get a hold of this. And I think ultimately, when we do get a hold of it, Mr. Mayor, it ain't going to be all that bad.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll be supporting councillor Murillo's motion at this time to opt out. If anyone thinks that by opting in, we're going to drive the illegal trade out of business, just witness what's still happening with tobacco and cigarettes and the contraband industry that's still flourishing, where people want to go and get cheaper cigarettes where you may not even pay taxes. So I'm not convinced of that argument, Mr. Mayor, that automatically by opting in, we'll drive the illegal business out of our community. I strongly, strongly support, wearing the two hats I do now, Mr. Mayor as a council member and through the good graces of my colleagues, being a new member of the police services board, I strongly support the continued action of Deputy Chief Kinsella and our Hamilton Police Services to do whatever they can to replicate what they did this past Friday to get a strong message out that we will not be mocked by any more flaunting of the law by the illegal trade. Mr. Mayor, you know, we can't take lightly what the two major school boards have sent us. This is all new, in my humble opinion, this recreational legalized retail operational side is new territory. I mean, it took us 50, 60 years to learn about tobacco being legal and what the downside was of being, using tobacco, secondhand smoke, et cetera. I know I've been, the odd time year where there has obviously been marijuana smoke and it's a pungent odor. So I think this is all new territory that we need to be careful of in terms of the downsides, the potential downsides of it. Some critics in the community actually made lighthearted of my initial concern of the proximity to schools and public parks and libraries back when I first came out with my comments about a month and a half ago. Well, I don't think we should take lightly again what the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board and its new chair and the Hamilton Wentworth District Catholic School Board have sent us, to simply dismiss them or basically say, "Where were they on other issues?" I don't think that's fair at all. Again, this is new territory. Mr. Mayor, I have no problem with the medicinal side of this issue. Like other members of council who have spoken, I know enough families who have benefited from relief from pain and suffering that consuming marijuana and cannabis can do for them when properly prescribed and/or used for medicinal reasons. Mr. Mayor, we heard from several delegates at our December meeting about we're already known as, quote, "The cannabis capital of Ontario." I'm not convinced or thrilled to have that moniker for the future if that's truly what we want our city to be known as. And even some business types have also said that it's something that we should pursue. So, Mr. Mayor, I think, I want to go slow. I think we need to be more prudent, cautious on where this recreational side of the industry is going. And so for all those reasons, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'll be supporting councillor Murillo's motion to opt out. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Knott.
Thank you, through the mayor. I appreciate the concern that councillor Murillo has raised through this motion, particularly about negotiating the things that we need for our city. But my concern would be if we opt out, we are potentially increasing the harm in our community. In the time or duration that people don't have places that they can access on a cash basis, where they can go to a reputable, regulated retail cannabis retailer, it does increase the potential of people turning to purchase their cannabis in the black market. And the black market is not a regulated field and therefore we cannot guarantee what that product is laced with or what other potential harms may come from consuming that product. And quite frankly, for me right now, the public harm and public safety is the thing that I feel I need to carry the most. And so from that perspective, I believe that opting out provides more harm, creates more harm, potential harm in our community. The other is that we would lose out on incredible economic uplift. The fact that previous delegators who owned a business in the startup phase of $25 an hour, that was a starting wage that she quoted. The wages went up increasingly higher within months of the operation. So I just don't understand why we would not support that kind of economic uplift, particularly in a time when more Hamiltonians need higher-paid jobs. in a time when more Hamiltonians need higher-paid jobs. So I believe that actually opting in would give us more negotiating power. I believe that being in the tent, as some of my colleagues have mentioned it, would give the province an indication that we are willing to be a partnering municipality and take our seat at the table in discussing the future of this industry and how it will unfold. So unfortunately, I am voting against this motion, and I hope that I have the support of other colleagues.
Thank you very much. Councillor Danko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To start here, I just want to be clear to my colleagues and the public around the table. I'm not in favor of prohibition. I recognize that cannabis is a legal product, that it should be sold legally within the city. Where this discussion goes is to the provincial policy that we are being asked to accept or to not accept. So I think it's important to recognize that the potential economic uplift from legal retail of cannabis is pretty significant. I was pleasantly surprised by the numbers in the report from staff. However, whether we opt in or opt out now, it doesn't mean that we can't still take advantage of that industry at some point in the future. We've also been talking about the potential for leverage with the province, whether we have more leverage, whether we opt in or whether we opt out. So I think that speaks to the fact that everybody recognizes that there are significant issues with the provincial policy. Personally, I'm not under any illusion at all that whether we opt in or opt out, the province is going to renegotiate the terms of their policy at all. I simply don't see that either way. Let's be frank, the provincial cannabis policy, it's not a policy. It's the opposite of a policy. And when I look at the long-term repercussions here, I mean, a lot of the retail operators that have come to council, you know, they present this kind of high-end storefront, and the good news story here. But the fact is, without zoning and radial control, or at least some sort of input of where these stores are going to go beyond a vague 150 meters from a school, my concern is if we opt in now, we're basically okaying a situation where stores can locate anywhere and take advantage of some of the significant marginalized populations that we have in the city of Hamilton. And we don't accept that for payday loan stores, we don't accept it for casinos, so why would we accept that for cannabis retail? So at this point, my feelings from our previous discussion, I have, you know, real reservations with opting in at this point, and honestly, I think that the prudent course of action is to wait and see.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to councillor Marula. I do respect and appreciate the insight and the passion that you bring to this issue. I really do. Hamilton has the most, but I will be voting against your motion. Hamilton has the most number of illegal dispensaries, and therefore, we have the most to gain from doing our part in ushering in what I call a legal ecosystem. And yes, there is a frustration with the supply end, and it is frustrating, but I think as a public steward, the onus is on doing what we can to provide for safe product, regulated product, and a quality control oversight of the sale of a legal product. The issue of leverage has been raised. I think if we are wise, we should be participating so we can engage in the practice, share our experience, collect the data and the evidence, and be at the table with those who will be studying this and making any adjustments, if possible, on the way forward. I'm also heartened by the concerns, and I do think they are genuine with respect to proximity to daycares and schools. But I can't help but think of the fact that there are real harms out there now that I wish we were just as passionate about, and those are cars and our streets outside of our schools and our daycares, and the drivers of those cars, and air pollution and a warming planet. And we have spent now in excess of 12 hours talking about a legal product and children. The irony is not lost on some residents in Ward One who have raised this very issue with me. So I will be voting against the motion. I will be anxious and working towards creating a safe environment and a safer product for those who purchase it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will be supporting councillor Marula's motion at this point, and I'm not really quite sure what the rush is. I agree with many of the previous speakers who are voting to support councillor Marula's motion. I'm not on for Hamilton to be a guinea pig as a municipality. You know, I worry that there's too many unknowns. We know that. We need to be in control of the destiny when it comes to this type of business in our community. And as was previously stated, you know, we do it for the money shops, we do it for casinos, we have radio separation for many other issues. And so I believe we need to be in control of the licensing as well for any locations that we do end up. And I worry that, you know, we're looking through rose-colored glasses here, and we're blinded by dollar signs. They're all unknowns. They are not givens. The only thing we do know for sure is the $500,000 if we opt in, and the $5,000 if we, or sorry, if we opt out or opt in, we will get that $500,000, and then the $600-plus thousand only if we opt in, and $5,000 if we don't opt in. But past that, folks, we don't know a lot of things. It's speculation, and I worry about that. I worry that we are going to end up having more harm come to our city than we anticipate. So what's the rush? I really believe we need to sit back at this point, and let's see how it rolls out in other municipalities. If they want to opt in, that's fine. But my vote is that we take it slow, that we opt out, for many of the other reasons that have already been stated, and I'm not going to reiterate them. So that's my vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Van Der Beek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I had the opportunity and could remember every word, I would repeat everything that councillor Clark said. So I think that one of the main reasons that we should be opting in is the safety of the product and the opportunity that we will have to be a part of the ongoing revisions to the bylaws and the legislation and anything else that regulates what happens in the legal dispensaries. I can't guarantee that every illegal dispensary will disappear just because we opt in. I can guarantee that the illegal dispensaries will continue for quite a long time if we opt out. I do believe that those businesses will set up, regardless of whether they can set up in Hamilton or not, they will go to nearby municipalities where they will sell a safe and legal product with the ability not to use a credit card. And I know that there are people who even medicinally have worries about using their credit card to purchase cannabis because they do want to be able to go across the border to the States, and they're concerned about what's the rumors that are there about them being able to see whether or not you purchased cannabis. I think that the economic uplift is a very real possibility, and I am not prepared to hope that we will have negotiation power by opting out. I believe that we will have better negotiation power by opting in, so that we can be there at the table and that we will be seen as cooperative, so that we have some credibility when we start asking for additional changes to the law, and that we will be able to join with the other municipalities who have opted in, in putting pressure on the government to listen to the needs of the municipalities as they come forward and they're clarified by reality. And so for me, the idea that someone can purchase cannabis worry-free about what's in it and where it came from, and whether or not they're getting what they are actually purchasing, is pretty important and very weighty. And so I, as much as I respect, I have great respect for councillor Marula, and I believe that he really has the best interests of the city at heart when he suggests that we slow down and that we wait and see and that we try and negotiate a better deal. I don't think that that's going to happen, and so therefore, I'm not prepared to support the motion the way it stands now. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Pauls.
I had time, December 18th till now, to make my decision, because at that time, I've had hundreds of emails and phone calls from my constituents. And the main goal was, they do not want illegal cannabis. That was the main. They don't want criminal activity, and I don't either. That was the main goal. I had a lady that just emailed me and said she doesn't want it because of the illegal. So I called her. Do you don't want it because there's illegal ones? We'll close the illegal ones. And then I basically wrote them all this letter to each one, I called them, and they responded back and thanked me for taking time, because I'll tell you, I met with a pharmacist who said it's better to opt in. I met with doctors, I met with people that said the danger of not opting in is what Arlene was just talking about. We talk about, I don't know much about drugs, but I know you can laze them, or I don't know how they do it, but anyways, that's the main concern. I want to keep our kids safe. I want to make sure parents tell their kids that any drug, doesn't matter if it's marijuana, whatever, any drug for recreational is not good. I want parents to teach their kids. And we talked about the distance of, it used to be 300, now it's 150. Well, I know the people growing in their backyards. I had some constituents say there's, right next to a school, there's people growing it for plants. And I'm wondering, how's the police going to watch for that if there's four, or eight, or 10, or I don't know? How are they going to do that? So the main thing I want to say is that I'd rather have control over something that's harmful. I'd rather have control where, you know, we have control about these legal ones, better than not to have them. And I am encouraging a way that we are starting maybe with one, or even maybe four, where we could learn in those couple of years, maybe, how to do it. But as I talk to people, and my vote was no at the beginning, and you all know that, but I want it to be more knowledgeable. I want it to talk to people before I make my personal opinion. My personal opinion is no. My personal opinion is, do I want cannabis? No. Do I want illegal activity in the city that I love? No. But do I want control? Yes. I know, raising my kids, when I had them together, I had control over them. And unless you have control over something that is unknown, we cannot make the decision. So Sam, I respect you very much, and it saddens me that I could not even support your bill. But that's where I came to my conclusion. And I want to say that I would be voting, yes, not to have hundreds of them, maybe to start with one, and then we'll see what happens. But at least we could learn together. So thank you for taking this time and listening to me. It is a hard decision for me because I have family to deal with.
As we all do, actually. Yes, thank you, Esther. Thank you all for a very respectful debate, and lots has been said. I could say lots as well. I think I'm going to pass. I think we'll get to a vote. So we have the motion before us. It's going to be an electronic vote. The motion that's on the floor is to opt out, so vote accordingly. So if you're to opt out, and so if you vote yes, we are opting out. If you vote no, we are not opting out, if that's the majority vote. All right? So the motion is to opt out. We need voters. You want to opt in, so I think you want to say no. Okay, Madam Clerk, loses on a tie. Thank you. I want to turn the chair over to councillor Far, or Deputy Mayor Marula, actually, ironically. And I have a motion that I'd like to put forward, so you're in the chair, and it's a...
I need the microphone.
Yes, you do, and I'll get it to you as soon as you ask. There we go.
Get the floor yours.
Thank you. I have an alternate motion, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Clark. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I think you have it before you. I sent it to you.
Yeah, I read it.
I could read chapter and verse, but the resolve is that cannabis retail stores be permitted to operate in the city of Hamilton in accordance with the Cannabis License Act 2018, that the first phase of funding from the Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund be allocated to strengthen bylaw enforcement in public health, that municipal bylaw officers in the Hamilton Police Service be requested to jointly and aggressively pursue enforcement activities against operators and landlords where cannabis products are being illegally sold, as well as enforcement responses, including but not limited to continuous inspection of all reported storefronts, notifying property owners and business owners of any illegal activities, notifying mortgagees of the use of financed properties for illegal purposes, and that the mayor correspond with the premier of Ontario, the minister of finance, minister of municipal affairs and housing, minister of health, minister of community safety and correctional services, and the attorney general, and the association of municipalities to communicate that this is the city's position, that the province's approach to the regulation of private cannabis retail stores in Ontario must ensure that municipalities have the ability to regulate the following in a manner that is appropriate to municipalities, that one, separation distances from sensitive uses such as parks, schools, daycare, and healthcare facilities; two, over-concentration of dispensaries in one area of the city; three, the total number of dispensary citywide and within particular areas of the city; four, general issues of urban design, such as location of entrances and transparency of facades; five, advertising and signage; six, hours of operation; seven, property standards compliance; and eight, the ability to restrict or prohibit operations that routinely violate municipal standards, such as noise, nuisance, or property standards. And that motion is before us, and if I might, Mr. Chair, speak to that motion. I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's the corollary of what you put forward, and I think the basis of it is much of what everyone that has said they are for opting in is, which is protection of product and making sure that it's regulated and legalized and that you know what you're getting, contributing and being part of an industry that, whether we like it or not, is growing and is going to grow, whether we're in or we're out, it's going to happen, and it's going to happen either legally... And it's going to happen either legally or illegally, and I much prefer to be on the legal side of the issue. And I also much prefer to participate in funding that I know is coming, as opposed to something that I know we cannot participate in in the future. And so, what we've asked the province to do for many, many years, is actually to give us a share, a predictable share of revenue going forward, a predictable share of the gas tax, that we don't have to go cap and hand, that we're allowed to take the gas tax and use it for transit and other uses, and we get a predictable amount from that. It'd be great to have a predictable amount from cannabis revenue, and if that's a 50-50 split, and some of the estimates for Ontario are in the billions of dollars, if that were to come to pass, that means tens of millions of dollars for municipalities that have opted in. If we don't participate and we've opted out, then we have no opportunity to participate in that. And I think the estimates in terms of the size of the industry, you know, wouldn't be a surprise to you, since we've had 80 dispensaries, and the market in Hamilton has been buoyant and large, that it's a popular product that people are already consuming, and right now consuming in an illegal market, and they have no idea what product they're getting. And so, for all of those reasons, Mr. Chairman, I am supportive of moving forward on this in a positive way, but continuing to work with our other opted-in partners, and as well as the province of Ontario, to work on the radial separation issues and the licensing issues as we go forward. I think we have much stronger leverage if we're participating with those that have opted in, as opposed to trying to rally together those that have opted out. So with respect, I put this forward along with councillor Clark, and I hope that this gets her support, because I think we need to move forward in one manner or another to let the community know that we're prepared to participate in this industry rather than letting it go by us. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll turn the chair, take the back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we have a wholesome list, and starting with councillor Collins.
Okay, councillor Collins, you're up.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to procedurally check in with either the clerk or staff as it relates to, I mean, it stands to reason now with the last vote, that we're probably looking at another 8-8 vote here, and I just want to confirm that with another 8-8 vote on this motion, we essentially are voting to opt out then. The default position would be opt out, because we're not then sending correspondence to the province advising them of our position. The deadline then would pass, and we'd be in a position of not opting in. Is that correct?
No, by defeating this motion, you're opting in. If we make no decision, a municipality is opting in.
To be clear, so the province said that if they don't hear from a municipality by July the 22nd with a clear direction of what their preference is, they are deemed to be opted in.
Correct.
Councillor Collins.
I have another question.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead.
Oh, no, I think I have to do this. I have to continue doing this. I have to continue chairing, it's your motion.
Sorry, you're right, I'm sorry, I apologize, absolutely.
No worries, no worries, okay, so now we have, but you, if you can control the mic first. So now we have councillor Whitehead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was actually going to raise it as a point of order, I'm glad that councillor Collins raised that question, so I'm hoping we show some leadership instead of being decisive or non-decisive, actually, not making a decision at all, it's not always in the best interest of governance. But having said that, I hope that we're actually listening around this horseshoe, and not just wasting our breath having this debate. So, the reason I say that is because, when I heard the conversation earlier, I heard that, well, I doubt they're going to change it whether we're in or out, so let's wait and see, I'm not sure what that means. I heard that we're not sure. Well, what we're sure of, is that if we don't opt in, it's going to create more harm. What we're sure of, is that we're not going to get any additional revenues in the meantime to address the proliferation of illegal dispensaries. We're sure of that. We're sure that we're going to receive $600,000. We're sure that we're going to receive something, we just don't know what that amount is in the context of the access. We're sure of the fact that the type of cannabis that we, that people have access to will be a heck of a lot safer than what is out there now. And we're pretty confident that if we have more legal dispensaries in our community, that it will have a net impact on the illegal dispensaries, thereby actually decreasing the cost that we're currently experiencing without any additional revenue. So, when I look at all those arguments, I'm just trying to figure out, and yes, those are, there are legitimate concerns, and I, and that's what we need, and it's attached to this motion, in regards to the policy statement, separation, a little more control in the locations, but I guess the question really is, is if there's only four licenses may come to Hamilton, one or two operators, is there anything that prevents us, and maybe this is a question through the mayor to the staff, other than the commenting period, the 15 days that ACGO provides, I got it right this time, the, is there anything that prevents us actually talking to the licensee, to work with them to find the preferred locations so that you have a voluntary decision versus something that's voiced upon us? So can I ask that through staff? Is there anything that prevents us dealing directly with the licensee to see if we can...
I'd like to answer that.
Through the chair, nothing that would prevent that? We deal with business owners all the time who seek staff assistance in identifying potential locations, so it's certainly a possibility. They wouldn't be bound to work with us, but if they reached out to us, we could assist.
I really believe that the first licensees want to make it a good and positive experience for this community, and I really believe in good faith that we have an ability to negotiate these very few licenses that are being issued, to put it in very safe locations that basically negates the current concerns on close to daycares and so forth. And even, and by saying that, we also still have the ability to continue with our policy statement, which is contained in this motion and consistent with Toronto and Ottawa and other communities, to negotiate those zoning issues, those separation issues, and more control issues, as we've through this experience. So the question is, what do we have to lose?
Okay, so we can deal with, thank you. Okay, so we have councillor Clark next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, so... So am I. So, I have a little over 25 years of experience in community activism or public life. And during that time, the one thing I've learned, more than anything else, is that standing on the outside with our arms crossed, our voices raised, thumping our chests, has no impact on governments of all levels, whether it's municipal, provincial, or federal. And we've seen it around this table many, many times. We make decisions based on substance and fact, and if you want to be at the table to assist, then you can really make a difference. But being on the outside and saying no, and then going back and asking for a better deal, it falls on deaf ears, time and time again. I recall very clearly dealing with the Mental Health Act and Brian's Law, and I had three, four activists refuse to participate in the process. They stood outside and protested as opposed to being a part of it. And what we had done is we set up the stakeholder community, everyone was participating, and we came in with the best ways of improving the legislation. As a result, the legislation passed, all parties support. One of the only times in the Harris government where all parties supported it. And those four were still on the outside, but they had no impact on the law. Had they been a part of the process, they would have had an impact. And this is what, this motion, in my humble opinion, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, does. Item D talks about, now that we're, in essence, agreeing to this process, agreeing to what the government has moved forward, we're still raising these concerns, and we will continue to raise these concerns through our Government Relations Committee, which, I think councillor Marula, myself, and I forget who else is a part of it, but we would be going to the government saying, you know, we still have these concerns, and there may be more, the police may come up with additional items. So what this motion does, which is different than the other one, is it enables us to be a part of the process on the inside, we're not thumping our chests, we're not saying bad government, we're saying fine, we want to be a part of this process, but we want to actually move the yardstick forward on a number of issues that we believe still remain unresolved, and we're in a better position to do it that way. Mr. Chairman, the last comment I wanted to make is I'm a little bit concerned, my interpretation was that if it's a, the first motion which was opting out goes down to defeat, it's done, it's dead. If this motion goes down to defeat, it's done, it's dead, and so then we have no position. That's what would be my interpretation of the two outcomes. It would be, in essence, the city of Hamilton having a neutral position until such time as we have the votes to reconsider. And so, I just asked the clerk and legal to look at it and tell me whether or not that interpretation is accurate before we actually have the vote. Mr. Chairman, sorry. Thank you.
If I could just pass the chair over to councillor Farr. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat myself, but I appreciate what councillor Clark has said. The only problem is that every time we've been in that position, we've never, ever moved the yardsticks, well, in 20 years. We've never been in a position where we could say no, and then negotiate, and then hold back revenue to the province, because it's always been flowing back to us. So this was a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really, not only create the leverage in isolation, but as I mentioned, in speaking with the mayor of Branford, he, and I'm sure he's listening, but he was waiting with bated breath, and he's been in contact with, as I mentioned, nearly 20 municipalities, with a population of over 3 million at this point. Now, I guess that population target will drop because of this decision if it goes towards not, towards opting in. So the, his intent was, being as disillusioned as I was with Amel, was to go city to city in trying to increase that, that population base, and the bottom line is this, it's all about revenue. So, if we could bring that, that population base up to 5 billion, 7 million, 8 million, there's still a lot of municipalities with larger population bases that have to make a decision. So, that's the only time we're ever going to get the leverage, to suggest that somehow being inside negotiating, we have been inside negotiating since 1995, and it's, and we're still, half of our operating budget is still related to the downloading file, so it doesn't, it just won't work. As much as I would love for it to work, I know for a fact it won't work. And keep in mind that, this is, again, a two-year deal, and then, two years from now, our operating costs will continue to increase, and we'll have absolutely no revenue coming in place. And I can assure you, with his targets and trying to decrease his deficits, and trying to create casinos at the Ontario place, and all of the other things he wants to do, that revenue is going to be directed elsewhere, and we're not going to see a penny of it, but we're going to continue seeing the pressures on our community, and we're going to continue seeing the rapid growth in the industry, and I have no problem, again, as I mentioned to you, you're over the time limit, but I have no problem supporting the cannabis retail component. What I do have a problem is, is signing on voluntarily to a regressive form of taxation, which we've been fighting and yelling about for 20 years, and to voluntarily do it is complicit and is not, is not consistent with what I've said in the past. So, that is really the bottom line.
Thank you, councillor, I'll give you the chair back. And now we have councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, I just, I just want to pursue this a little bit more with the clerk, so through you too, Janet. Janet, you said after the vote on the opting out, was that if it ties, that fails, and so then we're in, is what I heard you say. So why are we even having this vote? We're in, is what I heard your interpretation. Am I correct in that? Hold on.
That is correct. The way of opting out to the province is if you pass a motion to opt out.
Okay, so this, this resolution right now is just a ceremonial one, is it? I'm asking the clerk, through the chair. Is this a ceremonial motion then, since it doesn't mean anything?
A motion to opt in is not required, because you've already defeated a motion to opt out.
Why are we doing this?
Oh, through you to the clerk then, Mr. Chair. There's more to this motion that's in front of us than simply opting in. Says, what would also fail then if we defeat this motion is asking the province for separation distances, over-concentration of dispensaries, total number of dispensaries, general issues of urban design. So it would be nice if we just had this one, which I think, if we're in anyway, I'm hearing that we can't stop it now, because we had, our motion to opt out is defeated. If we don't support this motion, we won't be asking the province to give us these things. Through you, Mr. Chair, to the clerks. Is that true?
Madam Clerk.
That's correct. You could divide the question.
And I think that would be sage advice.
It would be what?
Sage advice, like it would be smart.
To put these conditions.
Separate it, like to separate it, keep the conditions, but separate the in component.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair.
I'm just giving direction.
We don't know what the vote is going forward, I think, to be fair, so you're assuming that it's still an 8-8, and we don't know that. And so, if we, if the vote changes this time around, then we get all of what's there as opposed to only half of what's there. So, you're presuming that the vote remains the same, and that ain't necessarily so.
Okay, so through the chair to the clerks. Madam Clerk, can we split this motion up?
Yes.
You have the option of dividing the question. The only two clauses that relate to one another are A and B. C and D...
But that's just ceremonial, because we're already in.
But it would have to be reworded, that B would have to be reworded a little bit, but...
What a mess.
C and D...
At the appropriate time, you could request that, when we call the question.
I'm asking the clerk the questions, Mr. Chair.
I'm just telling you the answer, and Madam Clerk, is that correct?
In your opinion, your answer. So, E and B are really redundant, because we've already defeated opt out. What's at risk here then is item C and J. Let's B.
C and D are following after we've opted in, some staff directions.
I think it's the right motion. See, there's two Bs there. See the other side again. Everybody's telling me different advice here.
There's yours there. Oh, for crying out loud. Some people don't need to go home tonight.
Well, I'm just trying to make it clear for everybody. And so, just so I'm clear again, through you to the clerks, because I have my version in front of me now. A and B is redundant. C, I think, is important, asking the police to continue. They've gone, I think.
They apparently understood what the outcome was.
And D is important, so, I mean, I want to be an alert follower on this issue, you know, I want to, but I've lost that. And I want to see what happens in other areas, I want licensing, I want radial separation, I want to be an alert follower. And that's why I never spoke to it, but I did not support opting in. But now that council's decided to opt in, I want to make sure that C, D are part of the resolution, and so...
Now, Madam Clerk, you can separate the vote once a question is called, and we can do that free of voice.
Well, we've already made, we don't need to separate it, because the decision's already been done in A and B.
So we just need to focus in on those other items, is your question, right?
Okay, we've got advice coming from the clerk.
So I'm just, I'm trying to get clarity, are you trying to say that let's not vote on A and vote...
No, I'm trying to say A is redundant, doesn't matter how we vote.
Okay. So Madam Clerk.
And B.
The motion is before you, as it was read. The motion was, is before you, before, as it was read, you would have to amend it.
Or separate it.
And separate B, C, and D.
But there's no sense in taking it out, because we've already opted in, through the defeat of the motion to not. All right.
Okay.
No.
All right, now we have councillor Danko next. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor? Okay, on this point? Okay, okay, councillor Danko's next.
Okay, okay, Counselor Danko's next. You gotta let, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in the interest of moving, actually moving forward on this issue and recognizing that the likelihood is we're going to end in another 8-8 tie and therefore be opted in by default, I think this is a prudent motion, and I'm willing to support this motion in its whole with one small change to item C, that the municipal bylaw officer in Hamilton Police Services be requested to notify the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario as one of the lists to notify there.
And you'll take that as a friendly, Mr. Mayor? Okay, so be it. And we now have Counselor Clark again?
Counselor Pearson.
Oh, Pearson's for, sorry, Counselor Pearson.
Okay.
Okay, so Counselor Clark, can you ask a request again?
Yeah, so I have to do that again, right?
Yeah. No problem. I don't see, I don't see you on there, though.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And certainly the questions and the comments just made, I certainly had the same feeling. Even if we voted to not agree with A and, A or B, A and B, I believe that we still, it's going to end up, we could end up in another tie vote, and we end up sending a resolution or sending nothing to the province, whereas we still want the conditions that Counselor Marilla had very eloquently listed in his motion that are item D on this, on this new motion, on the second motion before us. And I'm afraid that we're going to lose that because, in all honesty, this is my concern, was the separation distances, the sensitivity to uses to various areas of the city, and we will have no control at all. We won't even have the opportunity to sit at the table to bring that if we just say, fine, we're just, we're not, we're not even going to address this when it becomes a tie vote. That then means we've opted in with absolutely no protection at all. I, for that reason, I will support this motion going through because it still recognizes the concerns that the residents, that Counselor Marilla had in his motion earlier. Thank you.
Okay, so we have Counselor Clark for a second time.
I think I've got where we are with the clerk's advice. I still kind of feel we should be dealing with A and B, and then if we need to sever C and D, so be it. But the motion is before us. With regards to item D, Mr. Chairman, if there could be a friendly amendment to the mover that we, an item, I think it's seven, we would include odors. I'm assuming it was going to be captured under nuisance, but odors had become a rather large issue, and it would be great if we could have that discussion. And I'll continue working with Mr. Lindert with regards to some of the issues in the ward. With regards to being on the outside and negotiating, I can tell you that when Go Transit was downloaded to the municipalities, I think Mr. Eisenberger, or Mr. Mayor, you were on the Greater Toronto Transportation Authority. And we, I was the minister at the time, we sat down as a group, and we started working on how would this actually work if municipalities in the province were partners as opposed to just it all being downloaded. The outcome was it was uploaded, and the municipalities paid a portion of the capital cost, but all the operating went back up to the province. So there's an example of working around the table. It worked. Similarly to the Land Ambulance Implementation Task Force, they were at a dead heat. 18 months went by with, everyone was thumping their chests, and we went in and started the process brand new, and within six weeks, we were able to get an agreement where the province uploaded 50% of the land ambulance cost where they had previously downloaded it. So when you're at the table, differences do happen. So I still would encourage people to consider that in their votes. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, sir, for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. So we're going to separate it. Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, sorry. Okay, I think we're at that point. So I have a request to separate A and B. So by Counselor Collins.
Me, I did.
He did, he just did. All right. He did, actually.
He just did.
Okay, then. So on item A, all in favor. I've got to put it on here because, how do you separate it here on here? Okay, so item A, all in favor.
Of opting in.
Yeah, of opting in. And that's on A. So the cannabis retail stores be permitted to operate. Okay, did everybody vote? Motion carries 10 to 6. Now on item B, Madam Clerk. No, just A and B. They want it separated. On item B.
He just did A.
First day with the ju system. Okay. I feel like we're playing bingo. Okay. 14-2, it carries. Okay, now on the balance of the report, which is C and D, all in favor. Okay, then. And that carries, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that. Members of council, thank you for your respectful debate. I thought it was good points made by all, and we will reflect that in our move-forward position with the province. Counselor Marilla, I need a motion on the bill list. Is there any discussion on Bill 101? You have a motion there somewhere. On Bill 101, electronic vote, please. Bill 101, is the bill related to this issue?
I'm sorry.
Okay, yep. You want to read it out?
I can move by myself.
Sorry. Now, we're into voting mechanism now, so...
I can move by myself if I can.
Okay, thank you.
That's made by my...
Ratified the bill, yep. Thank you. There are no further issues. A motion to adjourn moved by Maureen Wilson, seconded by Counselor Farr. All in favor? Carried. Thank you all very much.